Sure, why not?
Good evening. I hereby call the Palm Springs Regular City Council Meeting of September 30th, 2021 to order. First, tonight, we are starting with a presentation and then we will go through the order of the agenda. So first, we are presenting a proclamation for Bisexual Visibility Week. So I'd one like to introduce Alhambra City Council Member Sasha Rene Perez to join us in our meeting today. We'll wait for her to join our Zoom room. Good evening, Councilmember Perez. You're live with the Palm Springs City Council. Thank you so much for being here tonight. So we are so honored that you're here with the Palm Springs City Council to celebrate Bisexual Visibility Week, and we're so proud of you as a leader for what you've accomplished. So just for our community, if I can, tell you a little bit about former mayor and now councilmember Sasha Rene Perez. She's a councilmember for the city of Alhambra. She has championed policies that create social, environmental, and economic justice for most underserved communities. In the midst of COVID-19 pandemic, Sasha swiftly enacted HERO Pay, an initiative that ensured grocery and pharmacy store workers are financially compensated while serving their community on the front line. She established the first bike lanes in Alhambra for cleaner and safer commuting, and she successfully passed Alhambra's first utensil ordinance, drastically reducing the use of environmentally harmful plastic waste. We've all worked on very similar issues over the past year. Prior to her transition to councilwoman, Sasha served as the mayor of Alhambra, where she became the youngest Latina mayor to lead a medium-sized city in California, and the first openly bi mayor in U.S. history. I would think we were elected on the exact same day. We were sworn in just a few days apart, and we're so proud of you for making history as the first openly bi mayor in the country, the first openly bi Latina elected to your city and in the United States. And just to continue, so everyone knows who you are, outside of your role as a councilwoman, you work as a public affairs manager for Campaign for College Opportunity, where Sasha leads the campaign's student engagement work, educating and informing students about the policymaking process, their rights, and upcoming legislation. So we're so grateful for your leadership, your visibility, your presence here tonight, and we thought we would invite you to accept, on behalf of our community and the entire BI community, this proclamation from the entire city council of the city of Palm Springs to recognize not only you and the history that you've made, but the visibility and the, you know, the power of the BI movement and BI elected leaders like yourself. So if I could, I'll ask Councilmember Coors to read the proclamation and issue it on behalf of the entire city council, and then I'll open it up to Councilmember Perez if she would like to make any comments. Thank you, Councilmember Coors.
Thank you, Mayor Holstich, and welcome so much, Councilmember Perez. It's our honor to have you join us tonight. So I'll read the proclamation. So whereas September is BI pride month, and through the work of leaders like Wendy Currie, Michael Page, and G.G. Raven-Wilber, the date of September 23rd was established in 1999 as the day for the bisexual community, their friends and supporters, to recognize and celebrate BI history, community, art, and culture, which has since grown into a month intended to raise visibility of the BI community around the country and the world. And whereas, this year marks the 22nd anniversary of the International Celebrate Bisexuality Day, BI Visibility Day, and whereas Bisexual Pride and BI Visibility Day has been established by the bisexual community as an effort to further this goal of tolerance and awareness, and whereas many advancements have been made with respect to equitable acceptance by sexual people in our nation, the bisexual community remains a distinct one from the gay community and seeks acceptance as such. And whereas the city of Palm Springs is committed to speaking out in support of the bisexual community in search of tolerance for all, and whereas bisexual visibility and awareness continues to expand through the work of advocates and leaders and through the participation of the community at large, and whereas the city of Palm Springs is proud to support the bisexual community and to be home of one of the first openly bisexual mayors in America. Therefore, be it resolved that we, the city council of the city of Palm Springs, California, by the power vested in us, do hereby assert our commitment to championing the values of diversity, inclusiveness, and equality, and we proudly proclaim September 16th to 23rd, 2021, to be Bisexual Visibility Week, and this is signed by the mayor and the entire city council. So it's a thrill to present you with this on behalf of the city.
Thank you, Councilmember Coors. And if we were in council chambers right now, if it wasn't COVID, we would be presenting this to you, Councilmember Perez. So just take this as our presentation, and then we will mail you a copy, so you will always have it to know about your and to honor your moment in history, in United States history. So if you would like, please join us and say a few words about tonight, about your leadership, and about BI visibility.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mayor Holstich. It is truly such an honor to be here amongst history-making women, amongst history-making LGBT leaders, both a councilmember, Lisa Middleton, as well as Mayor Holstich. I am just so incredibly honored to be in the presence of both of you. You know, as Mayor Holstich mentioned earlier, we both made history this past November in 2020, when I was elected and she was elected, becoming the first openly bisexual mayor in the country. And it is hard to believe in 2020 that we are still making firsts in the LGBT community, and it just shows us how much work we have to do and how far we have to go. You know, after I was elected, I had so many young students in my community reach out to me to let me know what it meant for me to be elected and in this position and to be openly bisexual. I know that was something that was so powerful and important to them. And Mayor Holstich, I'm sure you've received, you know, several comments from other young people in your community. I know for myself, you know, I grew up here in Alhambra, and I did not have anybody that I could look up to that was openly bisexual and a leader in the community. And, you know, many times felt like I faced both discrimination and really folks that tended to even deny the fact that my sexuality even existed. And so it is such a pleasure to see, you know, both myself in this role, Mayor Holstich in this role, and I just hope that we see more elected officials running that are proudly LGBT, proudly BI, and just so, so happy and proud to be here. So just, you know, thank you both, and please continue your leadership in Palm Springs. I'm, you know, always so impressed with all the things that you all are doing out in the city, especially on LGBT issues.
Thank you, councilmember. And we know you have your own council meeting to get to right now, so we're grateful for the time that you've spent with our community and our entire community that's watching. And I think you're right that that's the power about visibility, is those people at home, those kids at home who are watching along, who then, you know, send us messages. I got one that said, wow, now I have a BI leader, a BI politician to look up to. We've never had that before. We didn't have that growing up. So just grateful for your presence, your power, your visibility. Thank you for celebrating with us the diversity of the BI community, and thank you for your leadership. Thank you very much for being here tonight.
Thank you so much, Mayor Holstich. I hope to see you all soon and have an excellent meeting.
Thank you, councilmember. So thank you all for a little detour there in the agenda. That was because Councilmember Perez has her own meeting to get to, but glad that we could do that and celebrate as a community. And just to flag, I asked Councilmember Coors to read the proclamation, because he, as long as, as well as so many of us, has been a leader in the LGBTQ community. And I think it doesn't just take BI people to talk about BI visibility, but we really need to come together as an entire community to think through how the LGBTQ movement can be more inclusive for people who are BI, people who are trans, right, people who might not have as much power or visibility in our movement. So with that, I would like to ask Councilmember Woods, if you could please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Certainly, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with justice and liberty for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Woods. City Clerk, if you could please conduct a roll call.
Councilmember Garner?
Here.
Councilmember Coors?
Here.
Councilmember Woods?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Middleton?
Present.
Mayor Holstich?
Here.
All councils present.
Thank you, City Clerk. So next in presentations, we have an update about the Palm Springs Access Center ribbon-cutting ceremony that happened today. And we have CEO of Martha's Village and Kitchen, Linda Barak, who's joining us tonight in our Zoom room. So here you can see some photos. Hi, Linda. Welcome. You're live. You're connecting to audio, so I'll wait for you. As I wait for that, this morning, we had the full city council and city staff present at the official grand opening, the ribbon cutting of Martha's Village and Kitchen Access Center in Palm Springs. Welcome, Linda. You're here live with the full city council and with our community that's watching at home. So we just wanted to take a moment for everyone. You can see the slide on the screen. But the Palm Springs Access Center is now open. It is open seven days a week, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. It's located at 225 El Cielo Road, The Boxing Club, right next to City Hall. It's a drop-in center and wraparound services with the goal of helping individuals obtain permanent housing, supportive housing, shelter, or program placement, and provides much-needed bathrooms and showers and services to our homeless neighbors. Since the center opened on August 31st, 2021, Linda and her team, Martha's, has served 104 unduplicated clients. 501 people have checked in. They provided 100 bus passes, provided 171 showers, 31 clothing vouchers, 502 snacks, and 240 individual case management meetings. And you also had a surprise announcement this morning, where you were awarded $200,000 from Bank of America because of your work and service in the community. So thank you, Linda, for your decades of service helping homeless residents in our community and people in need. And we're honored to have you here today to say a little bit about the Access Center and your work expanding in Palm Springs.
Well, I want to thank you all for having me, and today was an amazing day for Martha's and I think for the community. We're still a little bit of a work in progress, but that's to be expected, and hopefully will remain a work in progress, because we should be adding new programs and services all the time. So what I want to say is kind of repeat what I said today, that it's my hope that the community will become part of the solution. It takes that for us to overcome things like that and put it in our rearview mirror, as I say. So it was an amazing day. Of course, the $200,000 was nice. I wrote that grant six months ago, and it was an amazing surprise. So I have to, of course, thank Bank of America, part of the funds. When I wrote it, I didn't know six months ago that Martha's was going to be in the location they are, doing what they're doing in the city of Palm Springs. And I wrote a portion of it to keep us going, because we had no funding. But I understand there was such a need, and there is still such a need. As you know, we're also operating the Warm Weather Shelter, which was extended. Its last night of operation will be Halloween, which is the 31st. And we have served around 184, I believe, over there, and actually had placements. So things are moving along. I can't say how much I appreciate the council and your city manager, and of course Jay, and all of the help, because it was a heavy lift, guys. It really was a heavy lift to do that in the timeframe that we had, and we were in each other's way between the city and my folks. But it did come to a very good end, I believe. And what we're seeing now, see, I don't stay in the past very long. I kind of bounce forward very quickly. We're seeing a lot of activity from the state again, and what the governor's going to do for homeless individuals. And I know you guys were in Sacramento, so I would love to hear what you learned. But there are webinars coming up, so we'll be poised to be good partners with the city, to try to bring the funds in, and of course, through our audits and monitoring and record-keeping, we will be able to feed the city the data that they need from our standpoint, and maybe help to bring some of those funds forward. So again, I cannot say how pleased I am with the outcome, but I plan to be even more pleased in the future. So I want to thank you guys again for having me this evening. I can't say enough about what I think the future could be.
Thank you, Linda. Thank you to your entire team, your board, your entire staff, who really, this was a huge ask that the community and the city made of you. So I said this earlier, but for people who weren't there, you got asked to immediately staff up a 24/7 shelter in the city of Palm Springs at the United Methodist Church, and you said yes to that, and you were working on it and going through all the hoops that it requires to figure that out from scratch. And then, at the same time, we asked you to staff up and start from scratch an access center at The Boxing Club. And I am shocked that you said yes to that, too. And we know that that's a huge lift. I mean, it's incredible what you've done in a pandemic, while you're already serving hundreds of people, while you're providing childcare and shelter and transitional housing and respite care. We know you're a leader in homelessness in the entire Coachella Valley and in Riverside County, and we know you have a lot to do. But thank you for coming to where the need is and serving our homeless neighbors and friends. And really, this has been an objective from this city council. I think Councilmember Coors set out a few years ago to get you in the city of Palm Springs with a grant to do employment services, with the Desert Healthcare District Grant. So we got you in here a little bit, and then now you've expanded to have a permanent physical location in Palm Springs. We know the need is there, and the hard work is yet to come, but we're grateful that we have a place. And so my ask from the community is, Bank of America has awarded you this grant of $200,000, which you've earned. The city of Palm Springs has recently funded you over $200,000 for your work, and I'm asking the community to support you, because that is not enough to solve homelessness in Palm Springs, and you can't do it alone. So I know that you're asking residents if they have the opportunity and ability to contribute to Martha's Village and Kitchen, that they can do that, to help support homelessness services in the city of Palm Springs, if they have the ability to volunteer. Today, we had a volunteer day where we put together care packages and hygiene bags for people with toothbrushes and deodorant, things like that. I think you saw a photo of it, the public did, where we had an assembly line going. So I know you need volunteers. We have thousands of residents who want to volunteer and work on homelessness, and I think this will be the perfect match and opportunity for people to... for people to also work with you to serve.
Right, I agree. There is nothing more healing for homelessness than to have volunteers and community members to interact directly with the homeless, to sit down and chat and hear what they have to say and find out who they truly are. Just by doing that, just giving that piece of you to them means the world. I know that's kind of cliche, but it is true.
Thank you, Linda. Do any other council members have any comments or questions to share at this moment? If not, thank you, Linda. On behalf of not just the city council and city staff, but our entire community, thank you for answering the call to serve in our community. We very much appreciate it, and we look forward to a long partnership.
Good night.
Have a great night. Next, we have a Lift to Rise COVID-19 Rental Assistance Program update. So we will let in Lift to Rise. We have Ian and Augustine from Lift to Rise to present. And just as a reminder, Lift to Rise, I'm sure they'll go into it, is the organization which is doing United Lift. So it's been over $30 million in rental assistance for our community through the Coachella Valley and Riverside County. And I asked for an update for council and the community to understand the needs in Palm Springs, the housing needs and what our renters and tenants and people who have housing instability are experiencing. Because it sounds like we have some of the highest rates in the Coachella Valley. So Augustine, welcome. Ian, welcome. You're live with the city council and live with our community who's watching along. Welcome. So if you could, go ahead and begin your presentation.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mayor. Hi, everyone. My name is Augustine Arriola. I'm the senior implementation manager at Lift to Rise, currently overseeing the day-to-day operations of the United Lift Rental Assistance Program on the eastern portion side of Riverside County. We're thrilled, and my colleague, Ian, who will be co-presenting, I'll have to go shortly. We're thrilled to be presenting to you a brief update on the rental assistance program, our progress to date. I'm sorry, can you hear me? Yes, okay, sorry. Our progress to date and the research is that we have been able to leverage, aggregate, and disperse to keep households in Palm Springs and county housed. We also want to go ahead and acknowledge that the partnership with Palm Springs and the funding that you have also allocated to supplement has been extremely important in keeping folks housed. And also acknowledge that this funding has been, or that the program has also been made possible by Riverside County, and it's been crucial in keeping those folks housed. Before we go over everything else, I want to go ahead and start sharing my screen for the presentation. So as many of you, as you know, we launched United Lift in 2020 in coordination with Riverside County and the United Way. United Way administers the western portion of the program while we administer the eastern portion of the program. To date, we've dispersed a little more than $85 million countywide, which has assisted more than, has kept more than 13,000 households housed in the county. And if you were to zoom into Palm Springs, that's been 671 households housed with about $4.7 million distributed in rental assistance. If you were to break down the average household size, which is about four, that's 2,400 residents of Palm Springs that have remained housed. This includes the $510,000 that were allocated from the city of Palm Springs through the CDBG funding. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and hand it off to my colleague, Ian.
Thank you, Augustine. My name is Ian Gabriel. I'm the senior policy and data analyst at Lift to Rise, and I look at a lot of the data around the rental assistance program. So I'm just going to give a little update on who received assistance in Palm Springs and kind of what that population looks like. So three in four households earn at or below 50% of area median income. So it's, the vast majority are low-income residents of Palm Springs. One in three have at least one school-aged child in the household. Another, one in three are single-parent households, and 85% of which are female-led, single-parent households. The households that have got rental assistance have been disproportionately Black and Latino. 33% were three or more months behind on rent when they applied, and about 1/3 work in either food service or hospitality, hotel, and casino occupation. So I know this is a lot of data, just throw it at you all at once, but I want to underscore that the bulk of the applicants are low-income, women of color with kids who are working in the service industry. In terms of how we actually reach out to residents, we worked with our partner organizations to get the word out about the program. So we had an application site at DAP Health in Palm Springs. We also work with Desert Highland Gateway Estates Community Action Association to do pop-up application events. We've done work with Palm Screen, sorry, Palm Springs Unified School District to do outreach events and assist with applications. And then the folks on our community engagement team have been going to community meetings throughout the past 18 months during the pandemic, getting out the word about the program and the available assistance. And we've done some, a lot of different kinds of targeted marketing and advertising to make sure that we're reaching the communities that need the assistance most. And so we recognize that rental assistance is a really crucial strategy to keep residents housed in a crisis situation like the pandemic. But it's also, it's actually a short-term temporary solution that is kind of a Band-Aid to a larger, deeper systemic issue, which is that there's a really severe shortage of affordable housing in the valley. Even before the pandemic, we saw that nearly two out of three Coachella Valley renters were rent burdened. So their housing is not affordable to them. And that number has only grown as folks have been losing income and hours and work over the pandemic. And yeah, the shortage of affordable housing is incredibly severe in the valley. Riverside County overall is one of the most severe shortages in the nation for low-income renters. And then we also see that the pandemic's disproportionate impact on low-income, Black, and Latino renters, especially the single mothers and the service and hospitality workers who are the backbone of the Palm Springs economy, really underscores that need for more affordable housing in Palm Springs. So kind of the pandemic revealed that, you know, there's really this need. It really underscored that need. So that's why Lift to Rise is working with 50-plus cross-sector partners in our Housing Collaborative Action Network to drive a bold regional investment and policy agenda around affordable housing. We're doing that with a shared pipeline of, a regional pipeline of affordable housing units. Our goal is to build 10,000 units over 10 years in the Coachella Valley. We've done that by also leveraging funding for, we lift Housing Catalyst Fund. And we're advocating at the local, state, and federal level for affordable housing friendly policies. We're also working with residents to build leadership capacity and movement building with resident engagement. And then actually, today, we just finished our action planning activities, which is a two-day strategic planning event that we convened around our priorities for the next two years and getting this goal achieved. And so we just wanted to, as Augustine already did, we really want to acknowledge that Palm Springs has really pitched in funding and communications efforts around the United Lift Program to keep residents housed. But we're asking that Palm Springs, the city of Palm Springs, join us on this bold mission that we have to build more affordable housing in the region so that we can continue to keep our residents housed in the long run. So thank you so much for your time, and we're really grateful to have presented today.
Thank you so much for your presentation and all of your hard work in our community. We very much appreciate your service to our residents who are most in need of rental assistance and also access to affordable housing. So do any council members have questions or comments about the presentation? Not seeing any. Thank you. That data is very helpful for us as we think through our priorities and the needs in our community. So thank you for being here tonight. Our last presentation of the evening is a COVID-19 update from our emergency management coordinator. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. The council had some technical difficulties in here. So I'm going to try to do a quick and good news-filled update on COVID. The first slide is a snapshot of all the state's metrics for tracking COVID. There is a seven-day lag when they publish their metrics. But we can see we've had this gradual downturn across all the metrics over the past month. The past week has been more dramatic than the previous three weeks. As we look closer at Riverside County, we had a 35% drop in cases across the county. We see that nice trend over on the bottom right over the past month, this significant lowering. But last week was significant with, like I said, a 35% reduction in new cases reported. Even more impressive was here in the Coachella Valley. You can see across the bottom, a sharp drop-off in new COVID cases reported. And it actually ended up being an 85% reduction week over week, which is really impressive. And our wastewater treatment numbers kind of reflect that same thing. As you can see, this is, since we started testing our wastewater, that over on the right, we see this gradual downturn over the past month. So a month ago, we had over 800,000 viral load count when we tested the water, and now we're in the 100,000. So really impressive numbers. And based on their estimates, we've had a 60% reduction in estimated cases over the past two weeks. We haven't gotten this week's numbers, but what we've been told is that they are even better than what this is. And that's all I have.
Thank you so much. Wow, really impressive numbers. And to see such a drastic reduction really shows that taking immediate action and sometimes difficult action makes a difference. So thank you. Are there any questions for staff about the presentation or comments from council members? Mayor Pro Tim Middleton, and then Councilmember Coors.
It's not a question, it's a comment. I want to thank everyone in Palm Springs who has voluntarily complied with the COVID restrictions. The credit for, I think, the drop that we are seeing really does belong to the people of Palm Springs, our residents, our businesses, and our visitors who have cooperated with us and who are taking public health seriously. Thank you.
Well said, Mayor Pro Tim. Councilmember Coors.
Great, thank you. I was going to say something similar, but I will also add that in looking at the numbers, some of our closest cities in size, we seem to be having about half the number of new cases. So really, I want to thank our residents and businesses for following the rules and taking the precautions to keep everyone safe. We have to remember the children, 12 and under, still can't get vaccinated. So you're not only protecting yourself, but you're really protecting them. So thank you to everyone for that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council members? Seeing none, we will move to acceptance of the agenda. So the city council may discuss the order of the agenda, may amend the order, add urgency items, note abstentions, or no votes on consent calendar items, or request consent calendar items be removed for separate discussion. So first, city staff, is there any additions or changes that you would like to the order of the agenda?
Yes, Mayor and council, if you would please, I would ask that you move item 5D, the convention center refinancing, to occur right after consent and before public hearings.
Thank you, city manager. So are there any items that council members would like to pull for separate discussion or no abstentions or no votes? Councilmember Coors?
Yeah, I'd like to pull 1K, as in, I can't think of something quickly, for Palm Springs King, and 1P for Palm Springs. There we go. Thank you, Mayor.
That's a hard one. Other council members who have items to pull for separate discussion? I'm sorry, just give me a minute. I have to look as well. I'd just like to note for the record, thank you to city staff and thank you to Jewish Family Services of San Diego for bringing to city council item 1I, as in Indian for Awakaliante Band of Quea Indians, for the Jewish Family Services to bring forward a refugee assistance program. And so they don't formally need approval to work to support refugees or relocate refugees or asylum seekers in the city of Palm Springs. But they did want to make sure to bring this letter of support to the full city council for both public support and council support and notification for our community, that they provide resources and support for people who have to start their lives over as refugees. So very excited to see that. I don't want to pull it for separate discussion, but I just wanted to note that for the record for people following along. So with that, I will accept a motion to approve the order of the agenda with item 1, nope, excuse me, 5D moved to occur instead right after the consent calendar. And then with items 1K and 1P, remove for separate discussion. Can I have a motion for that, please?
Some of, second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. We need a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Coors.
Yes.
Councilmember Garner. Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Middleton. Mayor Holstich.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Next, I would like to ask that the city attorney provide a report on the closed session.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council and members of the public at home. The city council met in closed session to discuss the items that are listed on the agenda. There was one item that Councilmember Garner recused herself from. There was no reportable action, and I should advise the public that there is a possibility that the council may go back into closed session to discuss some remaining items that they didn't get to. However, it's anticipated there would not be any reportable action from that either. Thank you.
Thank you, city attorney. The next item is public testimony. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the city council on non-public hearing agenda items only. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. You are asked to please begin your time by telling us what agenda item or agenda items you are speaking about. Please note that testimony for public hearings will be taken at the time of the public hearing, and the general public comment for subjects not on the agenda will be taken later in the evening. We shoot for around 9:00 p.m. So tonight, the city clerk will be contacting speakers by telephone. City clerk, if you could please begin.
Michael Torres, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, city council. My name is Michael Torres. I'm calling out on behalf of the Palm Springs Police Officers Association. First and foremost, I'd like to thank you guys for giving us the opportunity to consider our mural and through this whole process and helping us through and understanding the whole process. Secondly, I want to sincerely apologize for how things have come about. I know I made some mistakes along the road, but just I want to let everyone to fully understand the purpose of the mural and the reason behind it. Obviously, October 8th is shortly upon us, and that's the day that we lost two officers in the line of duty protecting our city and giving up their lives for our community. The reason that's such an important and significant factor for all of us is because not only on that day did we lose those officers, but we also lost several other officers that weren't able to come back to work because of the traumatic experience they felt that day that occurred to them. So I just wanted to come out today to say thank you all for just giving us the opportunity to consider our mural and also for giving us the opportunity for, or hopefully giving us the opportunity to honor the fallen and those who were affected greatly by this incident. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Adam Gray, you're live with the Palm Springs Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you. Good evening, council. My name is Adam Gray. I'm representing the Palm Springs Desert Compost Coalition. I'm a 22-year resident of Palm Springs. I am delighted to learn of the city's recognition of State Bill 1383 and eager to see the city pursue community composting. I embrace desert landscape and multiple seasons of gardening opportunities here in the desert, but certain criteria continue to present a challenge. Looking forward to the community exchange of ideas and information, and a compost project will foster through certain group volunteers and activities. I also love getting to know people in my community. A composting project will help enhance the beautification of our city and homes in a number of ways. Compost is great for soil enrichment and plants, assist in moisture retention, contributes to foliage and blooms, and additionally pollinators and so forth, resulting in healthy farms and healthy garden produce for our families. As a regular shopper and volunteer of the farmer's market, I see value in the flexible food systems, small farms and home gardenings, all of which will contribute to and benefit a healthy ecosystem. Thank you, City of Palm Springs, for your participation and support. Looking forward to working together in pursuit of a local location for this project with access to water and shade and drop off area. May Palm Springs remain the Coachella leader in sustainability efforts in California. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, John Pick, you're live at the Palm Springs Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you. My name is John Pick, and I'm a resident of Palm Desert, as well as a member of St. Margaret's Episcopal Church there and the local Sierra Club. St. Margaret's administers a food pantry distribution center that currently distributes food to an average of over 400 needy families per week, supported by the Fine Food Bank and local donations. Each week, an average of over 1,000 pounds of green waste, in addition to a large amount of unrecyclable brown waste, is put into the garbage, at least for now. Recently, we entered into an agreement with Desert Composting. Through that partnership, we will be converting all of this waste, along with brown waste supplied by the city of Palm Desert, from trash into rich soil. The particular soil will be used in our community garden, the food from which we'll go to feed the same people that visit our pantry. Desert compost will be helping us to rebuild soil, sequester carbon, and strengthen our local food systems. I urge Palm Springs to also partner with Desert Composting to move the city forward towards a future of greater climate resiliency, much as they have through their partnership with Desert Community Energy. Please fund Desert Composting and provide a space that has excess shade and water so that you name it forward with community composting in Palm Springs. Thank you.
Haley Preston, you're live with the Palm Springs Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Haley Preston, and I'm the lead organizer of Desert Compost, a community coalition to steward our local resources and soils in a way that benefits our valley holistically through community-scale composting. Community composting is not a new concept. It exists in major metropolitan cities and cities close to ours. Community composting can be found even in the smallest of towns. And in some places, such as New York City, it has operated since the 1990s and is actually sponsored by the Waste Hauler. Community composters excel at community education and engagement around organic diversion, as well as provide support to a number of other community and environmental benefit activities, such as gardening, food access, development of green space, habitat restoration, local soil remediation, and carbon emission reduction. We want to see these kinds of initiatives thrive in Palm Springs in conjunction with community composting. It's time for Palm Springs to catch up. With relatively little infrastructure, community composting can get started right away, and Palm Springs can be a leader in our valley. Our coalition has time, energy, skills, and people power. We can start recycling organic material quickly and without the negative impacts of trucking our organics out of the area on large vehicles that contribute to the greenhouse gas emissions we are trying to reduce. We need the city to provide a space for community composting with these three criteria: access, shade, and water. Also, the state has included in its model franchise agreement clauses that expressly exempt community composting from franchise agreements, and we would like to see Palm Springs include this expressly in the updated contract so that local small-scale initiatives can thrive here. I respectfully ask the council to direct the Department of Sustainability to ensure that these clauses are added and community composting is protected for the citizens of Palm Springs. Please reach out to Desert Compost, desertcompost.org if you have any additional questions. Thank you for your time and efforts on this matter.
Lauren Wolfher, you're live at the Palm Springs Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. My name is Lauren Wolfher. I am the Assistant Manager of the Palm Springs Certified Farmer's Market. I am speaking tonight on item 5C. Our outdoor season officially begins this Saturday, and one of our main goals for the coming year is to make the farmer's market completely zero waste. We can't do that without the help of community composters. Our whole business is based on local food systems and community nutrition. We're very excited to do our part to close this loop locally by reclaiming nutrients that would otherwise be wasted forever in landfills. When organic waste decomposes in landfills, it produces methane gas, a greenhouse gas that is 23 times more potent than carbon dioxide. Landfills account for 34% of methane emissions in the United States. A large part of our mission is encouraging folks to understand where their food comes from and to get to know the people who produce it. We believe understanding where food waste ends up and its impact on the environment is just as important. We are partnering with Desert Compost to divert food waste from going to landfill and to recapture the nutrients from that food waste so that they can then be used to grow even more healthy and local food. Starting October 16th, Desert Compost will be doing community education at the farmer's market about composting and source separation, what can and can't be composted and recycled. And if given an appropriate local composting site, Desert Compost will be able to collect organic material from our farms and customers and then distribute high nutrient-dense soil amendments to our farmers and residents who are interested in growing their own food. We think it's essential for the community to be engaged in composting, and we ask that the city support Desert Compost's mission by providing a community composting site and financially supporting their organization so that Desert Compost can in turn help the certified farmer's market do what's right for our community and for the planet. Thank you very much.
David Preston, you're live with the Palm Springs Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members in the city of Palm Springs. According to a peer-reviewed study published this week in the Journal Science, if our planet continues to warm at its current rate, the average six-year-old will live through roughly three times as many climate disasters as their grandparents. They'll see twice as many wildfires, twice as many tropical cyclones, three and a half times more river floods, two and a half times more crop failures, and twice as many droughts as someone born in 1960. These are just some of the ways we can now quantify what the study's authors call the intergenerational inequality of climate change. We can make a difference. The scientific and civic benefits of community composting are simple and straightforward. Community composting is the most cost-effective, efficient way to sequester carbon, enrich soil, reduce landfill emissions, and commercial fertilizer production, and even conserve water. It brings people together and empowers families to grow and provide nutritious food. The science is clear. The community need is clear. Even the law has been made clear. SB 1383 and AB 1826 were passed years ago for this very purpose. Our grace period is over. The laws now require compliance. Our inaction to date costs money and destroys our ecosystem. Just yesterday, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service announced the extinction of 23 more species of plants and animals. I am a father, and I am an educator. Community composting is a child advocacy issue. We owe it to our children to steward the environment they will inherit. This moment is too important to sacrifice to process, bureaucracy, or politics as usual. The residents of Palm Springs need your leadership. Please provide a space that meets the basic requirements for Desert Compost to begin collecting organic material and making compost. And please amend the existing franchise agreement so that it provides for all community composting activities to be exempt. Community partners who support stewarding our environment and providing for our children deserve the opportunity to partner with our city government. Thank you.
Thank you. David Weiner, you're live with the Palm Springs Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Great. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and city council members. I wanted to speak to Agenda Item 5D, but first I wanted to quickly thank you and the Human Rights Commission for the very challenging night.
David?
Yeah.
David Weiner, you're live with the Palm Springs Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Okay, let's try this again. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and city council members. I wanted to speak to Agenda Item 5D, but first I wanted to take a quick minute to thank you and the Human Rights Commission for the very challenging and productive meeting last night. Last night, we took a series of amazing steps that I hope will start our city and community healing from the events of Section 14 in the 50s and 60s. We decided to issue a formal apology to the residents and families affected, to begin the process of moving the statute, and to provide some form of reparations to those same families who saw their homes and personal possessions destroyed. It is without question that the residents of Section 14 that had their homes destroyed lost many millions of dollars of generational wealth that would or could have been handed down to their children and grandchildren, and that these same descendants could or would have owned property worth several hundreds of thousands of dollars in today's Section 14. Mayor Holstich estimated that the value of these homes was in the area of $46 million in today's money. Personally, I think a full economic analysis would show that number to be far higher. In last night's meeting, there was a specific mention of a starting point of $5 million for this year and then to build from there in future years. Tonight's agenda discusses an increase to the general fund and measured J budget revenues of $8.7 million. Last night, you asked the city staff to prepare a report in the next two months or so on what options we as a community could provide in beginning to compensate those affected by Section 14 for this lost generational wealth. I hope you will consider these additional budget revenues when presented with the city staff's report and that you will continue down this road of healing and rebuilding the trust for all of our community members. Thank you so much for your time and emphasis on this.
Jake Torrens, you're live with the Palm Springs Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you, and thank you for allowing me to provide my public comment. My name is Jake Torrens. I'm a community member in Palm Springs, and I'm calling in about the franchise language or agreement of language for community composting. And I generally think it's really positive and opens up the opportunity for having a coexistence of community compost along with a citywide composting program. The one area that I think requires or should be reconsidered, at least be revisited, is the concept of adding a fee for a combined service, because I feel like it disincentivizes the wrong behaviors, or disincentivizes the right behaviors and potentially encourages the wrong ones, and such that, you know, if you want to have a community composting program and yet you're being charged to have your composting already picked up by the city, there's not much of an incentive for you because you're already paying. Instead, we've seen studies across and other communities where, when they've increased the green waste pickup by a community service, municipality, that if you charge a higher fee for the black bin and don't charge for the green bin, San Francisco Ecology Program is a great example, you get great adoption and also you discourage the bad behavior and encourage the waste recovery, resource recovery that you're looking for for composting. So that's my point of view, and it'd be great to just, as the community continues or as the commissioners and the council considers this new language, which I do think really offers up the opportunity for combined efforts and benefits for the community, also community composting is, and community composters are great advocates and educators for the community. And I know that this is going to be a really big learning curve for a lot of residents in the community, so having them as a partner, along with PSDs and everyone else in the community really striving to make this a success. I think that encouraging us to not have an increased fee for the grain bin, but have that offer complimentary and find a different rate structure for the black bin. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Wermick, you're live with the Palm Springs Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the city council. I wanted to briefly express my support for three items on the consent calendar. The DDA, 1L, the DDA for the Monarch Project, we need the affordable housing. For 1P, I wanted to express strong support for the POA mural. It is an appropriate tribute to our fallen police officers Gil Vega and Leslie Brudinsky. And 1Q, as the Chair of the Planning Commission, I wanted to ask you to approve the resolution of public necessity for the Hyphen Beer and Wine Store. That project came before the Planning Commission recently, and it had our unanimous support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Abby Winston, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Hi, I will keep this brief. It's on the community composting, and other people have spoken so eloquently about it. I just want to reiterate all of those, I believe all those things that other people said, but the thing that I am most concerned about is the push towards completing the franchise agreement. I think, wow, just from reading the summary, I still have many questions about how best to incorporate the community composting, and I don't feel that it has been really exhaustively looked into and finalized. So I would like to just suggest that the mayor and the city council go back to staff and maybe even include some other voices in the review and in the trying to find the solutions that are best for our community. That's it. Thank you.
Prima, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments, and if you could begin by stating your name. Thank you.
Thank you. This is Prima Baverty, and I'm a resident of Palm Springs. Thank you for the opportunity. I would like to provide my support for the article 5C, in preference with 5C, supporting Desert Compost Community Quiescence. It's very important for us to learn what's happening with the climate change and what Palm Springs, which is already doing a lot of great things locally and in city and nationwide. And I think this is one of the greatest opportunities for the city of Palm Springs to get into this space and show what we can do. And we are, as a group, we are already in touch with the Sustainability Department, and I personally took the opportunity to request the public records of Palm Springs-owned vacant and usable lands that we can go through and pick out the lands, pick out the spaces that serves our purpose, which is shade, access, and water, and narrow it down, and then we can approach the Sustainability Department and take it from there. So it will make it much easier for both the city of Palm Springs and for our group to work with each other and get this thing going. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, we were able to reach everyone tonight, and that concludes public comment. Madam Mayor, we were able to reach everyone tonight and that concludes public comment.
Thank you, City Clerk. The next item is City Council and City Manager comments and reports. City Manager, do you have any comments at this time?
Nothing this evening, Mayor.
Thank you. City Council members. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Along with Councilmember Woods and Mayor Holstage and Councilmember Garner, I had the pleasure of being at the League of California Cities Conference in Sacramento last week where we were all very safe as we managed to get back together. But there were few panels and conversations that I was involved in that I want to draw people's attention to. Two panels on CalPERS leading up to the November CalPERS Board Meeting and it is at the November meeting that CalPERS will establish the once every four years determination of what we expect to be the rate of return over the next four years. This is an important step that leads to directly to potential changes in costs for local municipalities and I'm more than happy to go into pages and pages and pages of detail to it. But the long and the short of it is that if we continue with the existing portfolio of assets in the managed, in the manner in which we have today, the expected rate of return projects to 6.2%. That would reflect a significant change from the 7% rate of return that has been projected over the last four years and could result in additional costs for California employers. The board, and as you know, I am a member of that board, is looking very closely at what we should have in the way of an asset portfolio and has specifically asked staff to come back to us with portfolios that would project out to 6.5, 6.8 and 7.0 rates of return. With each one of those different portfolios, you have additional risk that has to be taken on in order for there to be the potential of additional return. Second panel that I was a part of was one on how to make your community more inclusive for the LGBTQ community. And that's something always important to us here in Palm Springs. What was noteworthy in that particular panel was the number of elected leaders who are a member of the LGBTQ community throughout California, including some communities that are not at all identified with the LGBTQ community. In one of those rural Central Valley communities, there was quite a debate and some very unfortunate incidents that occurred this summer with relation to the pride flag. And one of the city council members who had opposed the raising of the pride flag came to the LGBT inclusion event and it resulted in what was an incredibly moving presentation, not among people who already agreed with one another, but among people who had differences of opinion, who were trying to learn and to grow. And it was, it was just a great moment as we got to talk about the importance of members of the LGBTQ community who grow up in small towns and want to go back to serve and participate in the small town from which they came. The last presentation that I want to draw attention to is one that will be continuing. This will be returning back to the Revenue and Taxation Committee. It's a very important issue around sales tax. The Wayfair decision of the United States Supreme Court a few years ago made it possible for sales tax to be collected based on what was the residence of the purchaser. But in California, depending on the headquarters of where the distribution firm is located, sales tax can be either assigned to the resident city or to the city in which the distribution center is located. And for California-based companies, that is resulting in approximately 90% of these sales taxes being delivered to cities that have significant distribution centers, which accounts for approximately 10% of our cities. So it is one of those issues that frankly pits communities such as San Bernardino, Eastvale, Ontario, Fresno, other localities with major investments in distribution centers against bedroom communities such as our own, where sales tax, rather than being assigned to here and in other communities like ours, are going to cities with the distribution centers. It's going back to revenue and taxation as we among the cities try to hash out agreements that could ultimately go to the California Legislature to make for a more equitable distribution of sales tax. And I would remind everyone that the law that we are working with is well over 50 years old and was done long, long before anyone picked up their phone and ordered any goods from Amazon or anyone else to be delivered to their home. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Councilmember Corus.
Thank you. While you are all learning in Sacramento, I was chairing the Greater Palm Springs Convention and Visitors Bureau meeting. And just a reminder, as we now have the new dates for the League of Cities next year, we should look at the need to adjust our September Board Meeting and we just had a quorum at the CVV meeting since so many people are in Sacramento and so getting that date now will help us and other groups plan so we can have everyone there and everyone at the meetings here. So I think Councilmember Middleton has a new date, so just something to raise while I'm doing that. I won't go into depth about the meeting. I will have sent out to council the presentations that were made, some really interesting information and it's available on Visit Greater Palm Springs website for the public. Just want to highlight just a couple of things that was discussed at that meeting. So we had a record number of passengers at Palm Springs International Airport for June, July and August. And for the public, that's nowhere near the record number of flights because there are now bigger planes flying in. We've had record TOT collections for June, July and August as well. Hotel occupancy is down from 2019, but the rates are up, which is why there's greater TOT. For vacation rentals, occupancy is up from 2019, but it is down a significant amount from 2020 when many people came out and worked from Palm Springs and stayed in vacation rentals. So I just want to give that brief update. And then regarding the convention center, a couple of things to share. One, there have been some conventions looking to come to Greater Palm Springs from Florida and other states because of the safety rules and the very low COVID spread in California especially compared to some other states. For our convention center, it was reported that cancellations have stopped. The number of groups on the books for next year is very similar to the number of groups from 2019. However, what they're seeing is a reduction of up to 50% in attendance for each of the groups due to people still concerned about going to meetings and traveling. So that's something that they're going to watch and will continue to report back on as hopefully we're, you know, we said it before, so seeing rates drop and hopefully we're not going to see another variant and another spike. But that's the concern that they wanted just to raise and obviously that impacts our businesses, it impacts our residents, it impacts our budget. So we'll continue to report back as that information came in. Mayor Holstage and I are the liaisons for Business Retention and Economic Development. We had a meeting. I really want to thank our Economic Development Director, Jay Verata, for his work for that meeting. We had a number of one-off requests for waiver of fees or other financial benefits and the recommendation was not to look at them at one-offs, but really think about what are the economic incentives that we want to do moving forward. And so the thought is that some of that we can discuss in our strategic planning. But there was the most in-depth conversation about how we're going to handle TOT rebates for hotel renovations. We have a program in place for recommendations to make some adjustments to that, not just prevailing wage, but local hire, as well as whether there should be some TOT incentive for new hotels. So that's something we're going to have a separate meeting on, inviting the community to, to get some more information and some language and then council can decide if they want to bring something forward or not. But just, that was, I think, the largest part of the conversation. And with that, that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Other council member reports. Councilmember Woods.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say that I had the excellent opportunity to fly out of the Palm Springs, the PSC Airport, and our new ticketing wing is absolutely fantastic. It flowed smoothly, especially there was plenty of space with COVID. Everyone was friendly, it was cheery, it was wonderful and I'm very, very proud to have such an airport in our city and to have it expanded. Last night we had a joint meeting with the Human Rights Commission and us regarding Section 14, which is a part of our downtown area in which people were violently evicted. And I just want to thank everybody who either wrote comments, they testified or they simply watched. And the reason I say that or that I'm acknowledging last night's meeting is that telling our stories, no matter how painful it is to tell our stories, it's important in the healing process and in the understanding process of one another. So I can't thank everyone enough for, for sharing their stories on both sides of the fence. And that really brings me to boards and commissions. And I really want to thank all of our boards and commissions for the unsung heroes they may be behind the scenes, working tirelessly to make the city run. And I just really, really want to acknowledge all of our boards and commission members. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Garner, do you have anything to add? Did you already go? I'm sorry. It's been a long 24 hours here. We've spent most of the last 24 hours in council meetings. Okay, I want to make sure everyone has an opportunity. I'll just do a really brief update. One, the Palm Springs Convention Center hosted the memorial services for Marine Corporal Hunter Lopez, who was killed in the line of duty and is a local hero. He's from Palm Springs and we got to hear from his family. So thank you to city staff and the convention center staff for providing that to his family and the community to mourn the loss of a 22-year-old. Sorry, I'm a new mother. A young, a young man. It was important for our community to have that moment and I'm glad that we have the convention center to provide that. We also held our Coachella Valley Association of Governments meeting on September 15th. Everyone is invited to that meeting. It's a public meeting and I urge everyone to participate. We really are having conversations about homelessness on a regional level and that's really important. One thing that we're moving forward on that might be interesting for the public and council to know is that the old fire station, that is the county fire station that the city was looking at doing respite care on that we talked about, but then we faced some opposition from some neighboring cities about at the time. The county is providing that to SEVAG to be our new operations center for our Housing First program. So you may remember they were operating out of the boxing club and we kicked them out unfortunately so we could have our access center. And so hopefully they're moving forward in negotiations with the county, which is providing that at cost to the, to SEVAG to have staff there. And there's such capacity there to really, we have a mobile access van that SEVAG is using that can be housed there. There's office space. We work with Inland County's legal services to provide legal assistance to homeless clients there and there's just a lot of opportunities. So the city of Desert Hot Springs took a four to one vote to support the use of that facility and SEVAG at the executive committee, we also just approved that. Thank you to Councilmember Garner and Mayor Pro Tem Middleton for their leadership statewide at the Cal Cities Conference in Sacramento. All of us attended. We missed you, Councilmember Corus, but Councilmember Woods and I were there. But Councilmember Garner and Mayor Pro Tem spoke on multiple panels and were very visible about Palm Springs leading the way on so many important topics for our state. So thank you to both of you for stepping up and being those voices. Just to note, we had a vacation rental standing subcommittee meeting with Councilmember Garner and I, so we listened to the public about a number of items there. We held our dog park dedication for Dr. David Ruddy just this week, I think, or a few days ago. And what an honor to have former council members, current council and city staff and Dr. Ruddy to honor him with a plaque at the dog park that he helped build and fund as well as helped establish our No Kill Animal Shelter in the city of Palm Springs. I think a plaque, we owe him much, much more for his 20 years of service than a plaque. Unfortunately, we got heckled a little bit during the ceremony and I just want to say to the community, we are very accessible to you. We put our phone numbers out there. You can email us at any time. You can call City Hall to reach us. Please don't feel like you need to heckle us to get our attention. We care deeply about every issue that we hear about and we try to really work on issues for our residents. We also upcoming have the unveiling ceremony for Officer Vega and Zarebny for their memorial for the fifth anniversary of their deaths in the line of duty. And so wanted to note that for the community that that will be an important event. And with that, I have no other comments or reports at this time. So the next item on the agenda will be the consent calendar. So I will entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar without items 1K and 1P, which are removed for separate discussion.
I'll move.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Feel free to jump in with your second, anyone. So there's a motion and second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Corus.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Middleton. One more time?
I saw that that was the yes, pretty clear.
Mayor Holstage.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. The next item are the items that were pulled for separate discussion from the consent calendar. So the first is item 1K, an agreement between Palm Springs Unified School District and the city of Palm Springs for law enforcement services from Palm Springs Police Department for school resource officer. There's a recommendation from city staff to approve an agreement between the Palm Springs Unified School District and the city of Palm Springs to provide a full-time police officer, school resource officer on the campus of Palm Springs High School and Desert Learning Academy for one year, expiring at the end of the 2021, 2022 school year and to authorize the city manager to execute those documents. to authorize the city manager to execute those documents. So city councilmember Coors pulled this item.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Holstich. I think it would be helpful to get just some more information about this program, what the officer does. I remember in early August, at least from what I could understand from news accounts, the school district decided not to move forward with police officers acting in this role for reasons that were given at the meeting. And then, more recently, they decided to move forward if the cities wanted to approve it. And so it would just be helpful to understand exactly the history here, what this position does, and sort of get staff's information, because I think the public has, I've heard from some members of the public on this, and I've read comments from members of the public and the newspaper and heard them in TV stories. So I think it would be helpful to do that and provide that information through all council and the public.
Mayor and Councilmember Coors, I'm happy to address this, at least at a high conceptual level, and then Acting Chief Demoree is also here, then can probably talk a little bit more about the tactical things. It's worth noting that school resource officers really have a long history in the United States. They've been programs, often funded by grants, almost always representing a strong partnership between a school district and a local community. Our own program has persisted over the last nearly 30 years. This year, as far as I know, was one of the only times that the program was put into question. I've seen, at least in other communities, it's been questioned only when grant sources might have been eliminated, but in this case, we've had a fiscal relationship where the school district has paid the fully burdened cost of our school resource officer. So I only know what I read about and heard, which was that the school district was considering other models of providing security and other support within the schools, and was inclined not to renew these agreements with the various cities within the school district. I think there was some conversation subsequent to that, perhaps parents and others, that had some concerns about eliminating the program. And soon after, there was a meeting among some community and school district staff, and the decision was made based on, I think, renewed interest in the program and some very subtle changes to the agreement to pursue the program again. So we placed the item on consent, in part, thinking that the long history of the program meant that it was something strongly desired by all parties. I think we've come to realize since then that there are some questions about whether this model is the appropriate one in schools to both address security concerns, but also any other concerns. I mean, I can certainly understand that a school is, you know, a place of learning and not necessarily a place where you want continuous police presence, per se. So I think there may be some stakeholders that would like to see something different. That said, the conversations that we've had with the school district reflect the agreement that is put for you, before you today. And so with that, I can invite Acting Chief Demoree to talk a little bit more about the kinds of tactical things that a school resource officer does. It's worth noting, just from a high level, that these are unique individuals that tend to stay in an assignment, that have the disposition and kind of the special character and values that you'd really want of somebody interacting with our schoolchildren and teachers alike. So with that, I'd be happy to turn it over to Acting Chief Demoree.
Thank you. I can speak a little bit to about what the responsibilities and roles of our school resources officers have been in the past. Our school resource officer is responsible for addressing crime and for ensuring the safety of students, staff, and the public at large on and around the Palm Springs High School campus. Their job is also focuses heavily on building relationships and establishing rapport with students, faculty, and parents, and they proactively address threats, concerns, and social media trends that could negatively impact the campus. We expect of them that they handle investigations of crime on campus and assist with investigations into crime that occurs throughout the city of Palm Springs that has a nexus to that campus. And the SRO has historically remained a resource to parents and students that are experiencing issues either in or outside the school environment. As the city manager mentioned, we have had a longstanding tradition of relationship building and student engagement in our role as a school resource officer at the Palm Springs High School campus.
If I can just ask one other question. We know we're down 10, 12 officers from where we'd like to be. Given that, and the efforts we're doing, obviously, to bring in people through the academy and laterals, and being short-staffed is, this, you having a full-time officer in this position negatively impact other work? And how does that balance in your mind?
We're working towards filling some of the vacancies that we have, but we feel strongly that having somebody in the school is to the benefit of the entire community.
From a policy point of view, and I know there's community discussion on this, and I have some concern because it's on consent, and I understand why it's on consent, since we've done it in the past, but given the school district initially said they didn't think this was the right model and effectiveness, it might be helpful to have this come back, not on consent, and have the school district sort of explain their thinking on this, so we fully understand how they see this moving forward, since some of the comments I've written in the press say they see this differently than how it's been done in the past. And I think it would be helpful for the community and for us to understand that, so the public understands it, parents understand it, students understand it. But I'm, of course, want to hear from the rest of council. Thank you.
And if I could, Councilmember Coors, oh, I'm sorry. I was just going to say, certainly, we could, at the direction of council, queue up a conversation, including members of the public, school district, and other stakeholders, to do a more thorough evaluation of the program and gain a better understanding of what it does and policy options for how it might change. As you indicated, it being such a longstanding program, we had neglected to consider that some of those broader changes might be of interest.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. I might ask if there are any other questions for Acting Chief, since she is standing there at the podium. If I can, really fast, before I'll go to Mayor Protem Middleton. Chief, could you just introduce yourself to the community? I don't think that we've done that yet, or have you here in a way, and you have such a history with the department, and so could you just take a moment to introduce yourself and your background?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name is Melissa Demoree. I am the Acting Chief of Police here for the Palm Springs Police Department. I've been here for about 19 years, and it is my honor to serve as the Acting Chief until the permanent position is selected.
Thank you, Chief. I know you've worked in this city for a very long time, and we're so proud to have you leading our department, especially as a glass-ceiling breaker, as our first female Acting Chief, and we're really just grateful for your leadership in our department. So thank you for being here tonight and everything you're doing as Acting Chief. We know it is a lot of work, especially during these times. So Mayor Protem Middleton, do you have questions for the chief?
I do. Thank you. And Acting Chief, it is a pleasure to see you in this role. Could you, without betraying any specific investigation or action of Palm Springs Police, give us a flavor as to why having a police resource officer on the high school campus is helpful to the entire community?
We have been experiencing and investigating some violent crime that has occurred throughout the city of Palm Springs that has a nexus to the Palm Springs High School campus. And having a school resource officer on campus helps us not only build and establish relationships with students there that may help us with our investigative efforts, but also just overall build a relationship with the faculty and staff there that can also help us towards that goal.
Thank you.
Other questions for the Acting Chief? Or other councilmember comments on this item? Or Councilmember Coors, did you have a suggestion about how to move forward? First, I'll go to Councilmember Garner for her comments.
Thank you. I just want to echo the sentiments of Councilmember Coors, that there's a lot of additional information. I'd like to know a lot more about the program itself, when officers are called in to intervene in disciplinary issues, what the school district does in terms of resolving issues with restorative justice versus officers, other ways that the police can work with the school district to continue their investigations. What are the statistics from Coachella Valley School District and other school districts that have removed SRO officers from the campus? What is, what the policies are just generally for these officers? How many arrests have been made on campus and why? When do they call parents? What are the demographics? I just think there's, it goes on and on and on. I think it's really important that we evaluate these types of issues, especially when we do know that there's been significant change in the testing scores of students in the Coachella Valley Unified School District after they removed SRO officers from campus. And so I would like to actually have those statistics and others to be able to really evaluate these programs.
Thank you, Councilmember Garner. Other councilmember comments or suggestions? Councilmember Coors?
Yeah, I just want to clarify. My understanding is, we do have an officer in this role currently, and if we continue this and bring it back on open session and have someone from the school district join us, that would continue until we make any further decisions. Is that correct?
Councilmember Coors, presuming that we're able to continue locating an SRO absent final signature on the contract, I think that's how we would deploy the resources. That does depend somewhat on the school district's level of comfort with the contract kind of being held in abeyance in the meantime.
Understood, but they held it in advance for a while until the school has started. So my recommendation is we continue this to our next meeting, that councilmembers send the city manager any questions. I'd like the school district to prepare for and invite a representative of Palm Springs Unified to join our meeting for the discussion on this item.
Thank you. So there's a motion. Is there a second? Or, City Clerk, do you want to vote on this, or can you take general direction to bring this back?
If there's consensus, then yes, we can go ahead and continue this matter without a formal vote.
Is there consensus? I am seeing three heads nod, and I agree with that consensus as well. I'll just say, maybe two years ago, I went to the Boys and Girls Club to talk to their group of teenagers. I forget what their key club is called for leaders in the community, and I talked to them as a city councilmember and asked what issues were important to them, and their number one issue was safety on campus and public safety and gang activity and feeling safe. And then we've also seen a lot of organizing by students about restorative justice, like Councilmember Garner said, and rates of expulsion by race and ethnicity, and some of those broader conversations. So I very much think that it's timely to have a conversation with the Palm Springs Unified School District, since they've done so much more thinking and analysis of this issue, and we can have that conversation that I hope also includes the needs of the students, even though it's not our jurisdiction. Know that many students in our city are struggling with these issues. So with that, we will approve that motion by consensus. The next item that's pulled for separate discussion is item 1P. That's a request by the Palm Springs Police Officers Association for approval of an art mural on the existing building at 169 North Indian Canyon Drive, case number 21-003MUR. And there's a recommendation from city staff to approve the application, subject to a recommendation for approval by the Public Arts Commission and the issuance of a certificate of appropriateness by the Historic Site Preservation Board and to adopt a resolution. Councilmember Coors pulled this item.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. And I probably could have done what you did and just announced the event, but I wanted to pull it to draw attention to the fact that it is the unveiling of the memorial for our two-slane officers that Palm Springs Police Officers Association does every year. On October 8th, it'll be at 5:00 PM at 169 North Indian Canyon by Town and Country Center, and the whole community is invited and encouraged to come out to honor them and to see the unveiling of the mural. And I support the mural, and I'll move this item.
Thank you. So there is a motion to move staff's recommendation. Is there a second?
I would be proud to second this motion.
Thank you. So there's a motion and a second. City Clerk, can we just do, all those in favor, please say aye, or do we need to do a roll call vote each time?
A roll call.
Thank you. So we'll have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Coors.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Aye.
Mayor Holstich.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. I tried. City Clerk, you can ask Zoom to make some vote features for us. That would be nice. Okay, so the next item is public hearing. So the next item is item 2A, a public hearing to consider.
Madam Mayor?
Yes? Oh, I'm sorry, we moved item 5D. Is that right?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So the next item, because we amended the order of the agenda, is item 5D to authorize issuance of lease revenue refunding bond, 2021, Series B, Convention Center refinancing, and execution of related documents. And we have a staff report, please.
Good evening. As you are aware, we had refinanced several bonds throughout the year due to the low interest rates. I have Suzanne Harold, our municipal advisor here, to give a presentation on the refinancing of the Convention Center bonds. Suzanne?
Item, because we amended the order of the agenda, is item 5D to authorize issuance of lease revenue refunding bond.
We have significant feedback. Thank you.
Suzanne, can you please turn down your computer with the meeting? Thank you.
I did, hopefully.
Okay, yes.
Thank you, Suzanne. Welcome. So go ahead and proceed with your presentation.
Oh, thank you very much. So the item for you tonight is to approve a refinancing of some outstanding lease revenue bonds. If we could move to the next slide. So this slide, just a little bit of background, the Convention Center, there's been Convention Center financing of improvements over the last 30 years. And currently, there's two series of bonds outstanding. They total about $49.9 million. There's some bonds that were issued in 2012. You can see that they have a pretty short maturity in 2025 at a rate of, average rate of 4.07. The 2014 bonds, which actually refinanced the 2004 bonds which were issued for the expansion, they mature in 2035, and they have an average rate of a little bit over four and a half percent. Next slide? Whoops. So in today's interest rate environment, nope, the next one. Thanks. In today's interest rate environment, you can refinance at approximately 2.17%, and that's a rate, the average debt service is payable over 14 years. You can see that we've put together a little chart about how much money you're going to save every year. The total estimated savings are 4.1 million over 14 years. All the costs to issue the bonds are included in this savings analysis already. We can go to the next slide. So the recommendation, the recommended actions for tonight are for the city council to adopt a resolution which approves the financing documents. It authorizes the bonds to be issued in an amount not to exceed $60 million for the savings of at least 4%. And then it authorizes the execution of documents by the city manager and the finance director, as well as approves professional services agreements. Next slide. And then the recommended action for the And then the recommended action for the city Palm Springs Financing Authority is also to approve the financing documents and authorize the bonds to be issued in an amount not to exceed $60 million with savings of 4%. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for the report. Are there any questions from council members? Mayor Pro Tim?
I think this is a great opportunity for us to take advantage of changing interest rates, and I'm ready to move to approve unless there are other questions.
Thank you. So there's a motion to approve. Is there a second?
A second.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Pro Tim Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Garner?
Yes.
Councilmember Coors?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Mayor Holstich?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your work on this, and thank you for joining us this evening.
Well, I appreciate it, and I'm glad that the convention center is back open and having events. So that's great news.
Thank you. The next item, good night, have a great evening. The next item is Item 2A, a public hearing to consider an amendment of the development agreement for Serena Park located east of Sunrise Way. Can we have a staff report, please?
Madam Mayor and members of the city council, the item before you this evening is a request to amend the development agreement for the Serena Park development. Just to give you a little bit of background, this is the approved development plan for Serena Park. It is the former Palm Springs Country Club Golf Course, which is why it has such an unusual shape. In terms of the development itself, it includes a total of 386 attached and detached units over the 126-acre site. There were a number of applications, including a general plan amendment, a planned development district, and map actions. And the entire development was approved by the city council in September of 2016. The development agreement itself was initially approved in 2017 and then amended in October of 2018. In terms of the request, we received a letter earlier this year in June from the developer of the project requesting three revisions relative to timing issues for the project itself. Number one is relative to the performance schedule in terms of the milestones that are necessary for the development. Secondly, they are requesting to delay the $3 million payment from this year in November of 2021 to November of 2022. And then the third issue is relative to the requirement for undergrounding utilities on the west and southern portions of the site. In terms of that request, the condition of approval requires that the utilities be undergrounded prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the project. The developer is requesting that that be timed relative to the affected properties. What I would like to do is go through each of those items individually, and I'll start first with the performance schedule. The performance schedule is included as Exhibit D to the development agreement, and the developer is requesting the modifications to the dates that are shown in red here on the screen. And so in terms of recordation of the Phase 1 map, infrastructure construction, et cetera, continuing down the list, the developer has proposed a series of alternate dates. Based on recent conditions, the pandemic, et cetera, we feel that these requests for amendment to the performance schedule is warranted. Next, the developer is requesting a delay of the $3 million payment. By way of background, that payment is required pursuant to language in the general plan relative to the development of open space. And so the intent of that payment is for the city to acquire open space elsewhere to make up for the fact that we are losing open space here on the site. In terms of the due date, as I had mentioned, the due date for that payment is on November 1st of this year. The developer has requested to defer that for one year in accordance with the force majeure language in the development agreement. And so the proposed date that the developer would make that payment would then be November 1st of 2022. Relative to the undergrounding of utilities, as I had mentioned, there is a condition that requires utilities along the common boundary of the Farrell Drive and Joyce Street or Joyce Drive, portions of the property would require those to be done prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy. The developer has requested that that be delayed until Phases 3B and 3C. And so in terms of the phasing, here on the screen on the left, you see the northern portion of the development where we've identified Phase 3C, and this is adjacent to existing homes on Joyce Drive. And then on the right-hand side is the southern portion of the development, and Phase 3B is that portion of the development that is adjacent to the existing homes on Farrell Drive. And so what is being requested is to delay those until the development of Phase 3B. Now, staff had initially recommended a two-phase approach to this. In further conversation with the developer, what we are recommending is a change to the language that we have in your backup materials, and this is what the change would be. And this would be in Section 4.04 of the development agreement. So the language that we are proposing to revise is in accordance with the developer's written request, the city will accept a revised proposal to underground overhead utilities required by the project conditions. Said utilities shall be installed underground prior to and as a condition precedent to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy permit for Phase 3B. And so that is our revised recommendation to you, and again, staff supports that recommendation. The planning commission, as is their role relative to amendments to a development agreement, reviewed these proposed changes on September 1st, and they have recommended approval with added conditions. Relative to the payment of the $3 million fee, the planning commission has recommended that $1 million be due on November 1st of 2021, with the remaining $2 million due on November 1st of 2022. If the developer does not meet those dates, there would be a $1 million escalator fee required for that. Secondly, the planning commission had concerns relative to property maintenance, and as you can see in the backup correspondence, the public comment letters that we received, there are concerns from residents relative to the maintenance of the property. The planning commission has recommended that an escrow account be set up by the developer for maintenance issues and that the following be implemented. Number one, daily monitoring of the site. Number two, that the site be thoroughly cleaned of debris, dead landscape materials and debris within 30 days of approval of the amendment to the development agreement. That all tamarisk trees that are issues for adjacent homeowners be removed within 120 days of the approval of this amendment. And that, upon notification by the city of any violations, that the property owner correct those within seven days of notice. Additional recommendations include the following. Relative to the changes to the performance schedule, the planning commission has recommended that those be accepted as presented, subject to the revised payment schedule. Relative to the undergrounding of utilities, also accept that as presented. And then finally, the planning commission has indicated that if the applicant is unable to accommodate those requests of the planning commission, those additional conditions, that the planning commission would recommend denial. This is a summary of the recommendations of the planning commission. The full conditions that the planning commission has recommended are included on Page 6 of your staff report. One of the other issues that has come up in the discussions and the public hearing before the planning commission is relative to adding a third ingress and egress point to the development. I want to caution the city council that this issue is not part of the proposed amendment, and it has not been advertised as part of the public hearing. And so again, I would caution the city council that discussion of a third ingress and egress point should be a separate noticed public hearing of the city council so that all impacted residents could participate in that hearing. Secondly, I want to also mention that the development plan is approved for the site. The development plan as it exists with two ingress and egress points was evaluated under the California Environmental Quality Act, including an extensive traffic study looking at the impacts of those ingress and egress points on adjacent neighborhoods, and that was approved by the city council in September of 2016. The proposed amendments to the development agreement only involve issues of timing in terms of an extension of deadlines or clarification of development points. There is no increase in the number of units. There are no changes to the development plan that are being proposed as part of these changes to development agreement. And so consequently, staff would recommend that we defer any discussion of an additional ingress and egress point for a later date. To summarize the application that you have before you, the developer has made three requests, a revision to the performance schedule, a delay to the $3 million payment, and deferral of undergrounding, as we have noted. Staff can support those requests. However, it also needs to be noted, you received correspondence from the developer that they do not accept the conditions, the additional conditions, recommended by the planning commission. With that, that concludes staff's presentation on this item. We are more than happy to answer any questions you might have, and Madam Mayor, I would turn it back to you. Thank you.
Thank you for the comprehensive staff report. Excellent work. So before we open the public hearing, are there any questions for staff? No questions? Mayor Pro Tim?
Flynn, question for you. As you noted, the developer has not accepted the recommendations of the planning commission. What is the discretion of the city council if we were to either concur entirely with the planning commission or in part concur with the planning commission?
Mayor Pro Tim, in response to the question, planning commission acts as a recommending body to the city council in development agreements and amendments to development agreements. You may accept the recommendations in whole, you may accept part of the recommendations, or you may disregard those recommendations. The authority lies with the city council in the amendment.
And if we were to accept the recommendations of the city council in light of the fact that the applicant has said they would not accept them, what happens next?
So I might request the city attorney assist in answering this question. City council may approve conditions that the developer does not agree with. However, that comes into question that relative to development agreements, both parties must be in agreement with any modifications to the development agreement itself.
That's absolutely right. If the council were to accept the recommendations of the planning commission and adopt those, then it would be up to the developer to decide whether they concur in them and want to go forward with that amended development agreement, or if they want to maintain the status quo, which would be a development agreement that has an impending deadline for them to make a payment of the development agreement fee.
Thank you. And I'm not trying to shift my hand one way or another. I simply want to understand what the consequences are of what actions we take. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Good question. Other questions for city staff? Councilmember Woods?
I would just like to reserve my questions until after public testimony, if that's okay?
Yes. Any other questions? Seeing none, at this time, I would like to open the public hearing. The applicant will have up to five minutes to provide their testimony, and the public is invited to speak on this public hearing for up to two minutes. City Clerk, if you could please contact the applicant and public comment speakers.
Madam Mayor, I believe the applicant is joining via Zoom.
City Clerk, do they have a rebuttal as well?
Are you referring to the applicant if they are going to be making a rebuttal?
Yeah, the applicant will have five minutes to provide their testimony, and then they'll have up to two minutes for rebuttal, correct?
Yes, but the rebuttal comes after all the other public comment.
I understand. Thank you. I just wanted to say that at the outset. Thank you. Hello, applicant, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Can you all hear me?
Yes, you're live with the city council and the public who is watching along. We've opened the public hearing, and you have up to five minutes to provide your testimony, and then the public will be invited to speak, and then you will have up to two minutes for rebuttal if you choose to use it. So you can go ahead and proceed. You'll have five minutes.
Thank you very much. I am trying to kill my iPad, and it's not working. So let me, if we can get that out.
Take your time. Your time to address that, because we don't want the audio there. So go ahead. Thank you.
All right. What I'd like to speak to tonight is what we've been doing recently with the projects and some of the issues that have been brought up in recent public hearings. So with me tonight is the builder that is working with us and hopefully ends up building Serena Park, Dan Farina. And when I finish my comments, I'd like to introduce him so he can say a few words. What I'd like to start with is the issue with the tamarisk trees. So they've been, they were brought front and center by a lot of people, and we're very, very much aware of what's going on with them. We are, we have provided a thorough history of all of our maintenance activities at the property to staff with invoices, with dollar amount spent, and several of the pertinent city departments, fire, police, code enforcement have been active, working with us on dealing with perimeter issues and maintenance of the property. Currently, we are removing with the roots approximately 1,000 lineal feet of tamarisk trees on the property adjacent to the Four Seasons because of damages that were done by the trees to those properties. You can see it in the field, if any of you want to see, just by driving into the parking lot at Four Seasons, you can see the work that we're doing. But our work on that is ongoing. That is voluntary on our behalf, and it is working with the neighbors, which is something that we've tried to do all along here. It is not a new condition that we are agreeing to by the city. It is something that we think we need to do as a steward of this property until we can have it ready for development. Be there little doubt, we need rooftops to pay for the work necessary to take out the tamarisk trees and to clean the site. That's a lot of money. The second thing that I would like to talk about tonight is the issue of the third access that came up. And Flynn did a good job of explaining to it and what some of the nexus is there, and we've heard certainly comments from both members of your city council and the neighbors and some of the residents of Gene Autry at the planning commission hearings, and certainly the planning commissioners. We build the access. We will build the access that the city wants. If there is a city project that affects that access, that changes that access, we'll work with you to do what the with you to do what the city wants as a city project. And as Flynn very ably explained, our project has CEQA findings and was through extensive public hearings, and the decision that was made was very different than that. Is that something you can change as a city project? Absolutely. Do we pay the very large majority of whatever you end up deciding as a city? Yes, that's what happens, but it is up to you, and we'll work with you on the direction that you want to go as a city project. That's a community thing. We worked with the neighbors. We presented the neighbors' opinions at the time of the public hearing several years ago, and you all voted, and you made a decision. We provided the facts necessary for you to make those decisions, and we do not have a card in this role relative to the direction of where the city wants to go with that issue. On the undergrounding of the utilities, I've had two members of your council out on the site so that you can see it in the field, and I think both of you had the same reaction is that when you see it in the field, it becomes very clear on what's going on. Our opinion is, very clearly, those utility undergroundings, which have to do with Desert Park Estates, it's not our utilities, but that is, your condition is absolutely right. All we're asking for is an acknowledgement that the development agreement phasing applies to that condition. Nothing more or less. The overall city condition is well worded, but it is unclear because we have a phased development, it doesn't get into the weeds as to how our development is phased. So, we asked for an acknowledgement of that last spring, and unfortunately, we got a very, very different opinion from your former city manager's office, and that basically caused a stop to the project. Project doesn't work. We're dead. We're not, we can't spend that kind of money upfront with the kind of risks involved, and one trip to the field, and you can see the risks that are involved in that scope of work. It affects about 50 out of the 386 lots in Serena Park. We think we can get it done, but it's a two-year-plus project, and it's several million dollars. And we've explained that in detail to the city staff.
You have 20 seconds.
So, we're asking for your request, we're asking a request at Williams' request that the COVID situation did affect us. We lost a builder that cost us a year. And we have Williams who came in and said, "This is our schedule. This is what we can do." So, I'd like to turn that over to Dan at this point.
I'm sorry, your time is up unless the mayor would like to grant more time.
I can turn it over to Dan at this point.
I'm sorry, but the applicant's time is over.
You have five minutes, which is used, and so now we will go to public comment, and then you will have two minutes for rebuttal, so you can use those two minutes at the end for whatever you'd like, if that works. That's the process we follow for every single public hearing.
Understood.
Thank you. So, next, the public is invited to speak on this public hearing for up to two minutes. City Clerk, if you could please contact speaker.
Thank you very much. I'd like to offer an idea for the area right directly adjacent to my backyard. It would be a dog park, and I would like to name it the Bob Hope Memorial Dog Park, since this golf course was one of the original golf courses that the presidents played on back in the '60s. And I could completely take it from start to scratch to make it look very nice as far as water fountains for big dogs, little dogs, and for humans, and vending machines for refreshments. We could have rest areas for dog owners, one that's covered, one that's not, or if I need two, I'll do two. And we have doggy poopy bags, and I could also have portable jocks until we build stationary ones. And the park will be maintained daily. I would like to use existing recycled water system that is already in place with the golf course, and we could use solar to power the pumps for the water. And I would have a park hours from 9:00 to 5:30, seven days a week, all year long. And the park is, like I mentioned, a historical landmark, whether that means anything, but my father was a very adamant golfer, and I'm sure he'd be impressed, but he's no longer with us. And what I would do is, I can do all the funding through a 503 nonprofit, and I would maintain the property, and it's right at my backyard, and my address is 2790 East Verona.
Gary, your time is over.
Yes? Excuse me?
Your time is over. Thank you for your comments. James Green, you're live with the Palm Springs Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
My name is James Green, and I'm a vice chair of the Gene Autry Neighborhood Organization. I and the many neighbors I've discussed Serena Park with find it unacceptable that a planned development with close to 400 homes would dump most of its traffic onto our streets. Cut-through traffic has been continually increasing each year in our neighborhood, and our streets are already falling apart. In the 2014 traffic impact analysis for Serena Park, there is not even a mention, or less a study, of a possible third access point. It may be too late to challenge the CEQA and EAR at this point, but as a matter of public record, our organization does feel that other mitigation measures, such as an appropriately located third access point, would substantially reduce additional traffic into our neighborhood and avoid diminishing our quality of life and endangering our property values. So, where could the third access point be located and have the most impact on traffic? We've heard repeatedly in meetings and in news coverage over the years that the Racket Club Feral Interest makes the most sense. These are the words of a city council member in 2016, who's now in the planning commission. In fact, it makes so much sense that the planning commission chair herself asked the city attorney at the last meeting if the city could utilize eminent domain because the land necessary to make it happen is adjacent to the Whitewater Club homes. Those are the 286 existing homes surrounded by Serena Park, which, in the current development agreement, regain access to roads through the golf course that lead into our neighborhood. So, that equates to not just cars from 386 homes, but 672 homes heading towards our neighborhood. That's wrong, unfair, and unnecessary. Please mandate a third access point that makes the most sense and more fairly distributes traffic among the four neighborhoods affected by this development. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Allen, you're live with the Palm Springs Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Hi, my name is Mark Allen, and I'm the attorney for PS Country Club LLC, the owner of the property. I'm here to answer questions and to also reiterate that the applicant has not asked for an amendment to the development agreement. If you look at Exhibit 4 or Attachment 4 to your package, you'll see the letter that was sent by the developer, and you'll see that it does not ask that the development agreement be amended. Rather, it asks the city to acknowledge that the things that this developer is asking for are consistent with the development agreement as it is. I have nothing else to say unless there are questions.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect. Corinne Griswold, you're live with the Palm Springs Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Corinne Griswold. My husband and I moved to Palm Springs in 1975 and bought our home in the Gene Autry neighborhood in 1977, so we've been here for 44 years. I retired recently after teaching 37 years for the Palm Springs Unified School District, the last 15 at Raymond Crete Middle School, and we've raised two kids here. One of the most unfortunate changes in our neighborhood recently has been an increase in traffic, especially cars cutting through Via Esquela and North Whitewater Club Drive. I'm concerned for the kids who still live here. There's a daycare located across the street from our house, and one of our neighbors on the next street behind me has even put up a "Caution Children at Play" sign because they're worried about the increasing cut-through traffic speeding down the street. I think the additional traffic, these new developments like Serena Park bring, need to be handled in a smart way. I've studied the maps for Serena Park, and I don't think it does that right now. I've walked that whole property, and I can't understand why there are only two entrances and exits included in the plans. It seems pretty obvious that Serena Park residents who want to get somewhere in Palm Springs quicker are going to head to Whitewater Drive and Verona Road. I'm asking you, as a long-term resident of Palm Springs, to please make sure Serena Park includes a third entrance and exit. Spread the traffic across the neighborhoods around the development and help keep our kids safer. Thank you.
Ross Bodie, you're live with the Palm Springs Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Ross Bodie, and I'm the chair of the Gene Autry Neighborhood Organization. Our city proudly embraces fairness, equality, and equity. Mutually sharing benefits and burdens epitomizes equity and fairness. Our organization and residents join with the three other affected neighborhoods to celebrate the pending benefit of the city cracking down on the blighted Serena Park property. Why isn't the burden of traffic shared as well? Serena Park needs a third access point to more equitably spread out traffic across the four neighborhoods surrounding it. Otherwise, as the traffic impact analysis from 2014 predicts, 60% or more of the traffic would head towards my neighborhood. A quarter of that traffic is expected to come from the 286 homes, existing homes, in the Whitewater Club development, by them regaining access to the old golf course's main gate at the North Whitewater Club Drive and Verona Road. The path forward to achieving a third access point is noted in the September 7, 2016 city staff report. The main gate to the Whitewater Club development, it explained, would need to be moved further to the northeast in order to accommodate access to both of the cul-de-sacs streets proposed adjacent to the gated entrance. Those internal Serena Park roads would then be able to access city streets without going through any Whitewater Club development property. Let's do the fair and right thing by mandating the third access point that makes sense. Require the developer to seriously negotiate with the Whitewater Club Development HOAs to modify their easement and gate location to create the access. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Wermick, you're live with the Palm Springs Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you. My name is Kathy Wermick, and I'm speaking as the chair of the planning commission, and I will be available to answer any questions the council has regarding our recommendations. I wanted to say a couple of things. We supported this project in 2016, and we continue to want to see it developed. The changes to the development schedule and the undergrounding of utilities, both of those make sense. You may want to give them more time on the development schedule. We were concerned about the lack of action for the last four years since the development agreement was approved, and we noted that the failure to pay the $3 million was something that was extended, and the failure to pay it is an item of default under the development agreement. We strongly felt that the developer needed to show an additional commitment to the project by putting some of the money in upfront. And we felt also that the project had a very long history of zoning problems, not zoning problems, but code problems where the property hasn't been maintained, and it also hasn't been adequately fenced. So, those were our concerns. That was a unanimous vote by the commission that had two hearings on this project before we passed a recommendation along to you. We do feel that the lack of action on the project where other builders were building during the COVID period, that COVID isn't an adequate reason for the lack of action on this project, and we would stand by our recommendations. We also ask you to consider the third access point if you can't do it tonight, and you can do it in an alternate way where it's a city project. First time I've heard of that.
Kathy?
But it makes sense. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Jim Divitt, you're live at the Palm Springs Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, council members. I appreciate getting to talk to you about all the traffic that I fight hard to get anywhere from my home in the Gene Autry neighborhood. My name is Jim McDivitt, and I have lived in the Arnico Courts part of my neighborhood for a long time. We are the homes of Via Esquela between North Whitewater Club Drive and Gene Autry Trail. If you aren't familiar with our part of Gene Autry, let me describe it to you. We only have two streets that we can use to go in and out of Via Esquela and reach the rest of Palm Springs. All of our streets and cul-de-sacs wind around to those two streets. So, first, you hope they're not backed up when you get there, and you pray speeding cut-through traffic on Via Esquela doesn't run you down. Traffic in the surrounding neighborhood continues to get worse. Once I finally tend to turn on Via Esquela, I can usually get to Gene Autry pretty quick. But, boy, some days you wouldn't think someone left a barn door open. The traffic is backed up on Gene Trail and Vista Chino. I can see cars streaming down Via Esquela and trying to avoid the backups to buy the wonderful speed bumps in the city installed. I call it the Via Esquela Speedway. Now, here comes the Serena Park on the scene. I read before they're going to have only two ways to get in and out, with the main gate being North Whitewater Club Drive and Verona Road. I was flabbergasted. All of those additional traffic coming in and nearby Whitewater Club is up and down and across Via Esquela. I'll tell you, it's going to be a mess. Please respect my neighborhood and help us make them put another gate in another neighborhood or spread out the traffic and get these people where they want to go. But just don't send them through Gene Autry. Thanks for listening and everything you do.
Thank you. Denise Jansen-Eager, you're live at the Palm Springs Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Hello, my name is Denise Jansen-Eager, and I live at Palm Springs Country Club in Alexandra Estates 2, which Serena Park project completely surrounds. Please vote yes to approve the extended development agreement, which includes all the planning commission's conditions as expressed on Page 6 of the Development Agreement Amendment. Make no mistake, I'm in complete agreement with the planning commission's unanimous decision of having no faith that some of this investment has any intention of following through on completing the project. Since we began, Mr. Taylor has promised us many things that have not followed through, causing blight and fear among the residents of my 200-home community. Just a few of the things that have happened in the past five years: multiple small fires, cement rocks thrown through people's windows, motorcycle ATV doom-bugging racing throughout the property, large trash and items dumped on the property, including equipment that police said could have been part of a portable meth lab, vandalism of tires, and homelessness at apartments. It has been through repeated phone calls to the city that we have been able to force Mr. Taylor to take action to remediate the blight that continues to negatively impact our lives to this day. If he was a man of his word, Mr. Taylor would have voluntarily fixed many of the items that were brought to the planning commission's attention on September 3. He has not. Case in point, today, I returned to Palm Springs after several Case in point, today, I returned to Palm Springs after several months away and drove past the entrance to Serena Park at the intersection of Verona Road and Whitewater Club Drive. Not surprisingly, after five years, the walk-through entrance to the right of the gate is still completely open, and the wooden wall to the left of the gate had been torn down and allowing people to walk through. I've sent you all photos today. We and Palm Springs Country Club in Alexandra Estates Two are tired of Mr. Taylor being an absentee landlord and always having us having to police him. Please vote yes to approve Serena Park Project's Extended Development Agreement, which includes all the planning commission's conditions. If you remove any of them, then vote no. You must put teeth in the amendments to force some misinvestments to comply. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Lindquist, you're live at the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to address you and for what you do for our city. My name is Mark Lindquist. My husband and I own a home on North Whitewater Club Drive in the Jean Autry neighborhood. We are one block from East Vista Chino Road near its intersection with North Jean Autry Trail. I mention our home's proximity to these major roadways for this reason. In just a little over a year and a half since we bought our home, traffic has increased tremendously on these roads, causing a lot of cut-through traffic on our neighborhood streets. As council members may know, there is no traffic light to get out onto Vista Chino from Whitewater Club Drive. Many days, the volume of traffic forces you to dart out into the middle turn lane before merging. As council members do know, the current plans for the Serena Park Development have my street as the primary feeder road to the main entrance. I was surprised when I found out the city was going to require only two entrances and exits for cars from a development of about four hundred homes. Turns out, it's really traffic from six hundred and seventy-two homes when you include the existing homes surrounded by Serena Park, regaining access to the main gate at Whitewater and Verona. Then I hear there is an application pending to build another thirty-one homes next door at a development called Casa Verona with one way in and one way out. That's seven hundred and three homes more than my entire neighborhood. Given that the traffic impact analysis warns about more deterioration of traffic conditions on Vista Chino by twenty thirty, I'm tremendously concerned about an increase in accidents on that critical roadway and even more impatient cut-through traffic making my street and other neighborhood streets very unsafe. I strongly urge council members to mandate a third entrance exit to spread out traffic across the adjacent neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Brock Bennett, you're live at the Palm Springs Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you, and thank you for allowing me to speak my grievance. I live in the Jean Autry neighborhood, and I live about two blocks over from Whitewater Club Trail between San Juan and Via Escola. I purchased my home in two thousand eight. I'm a handyman, and I've already seen so much change go on in my neighborhood in regards to traffic getting onto Vista Chino and Via Escola. And first of all, the speed bumps helped a lot with the traffic going down Via Escola, so I really want to thank the city for getting that done. And so I'm here today because I want to talk about the Serena Park Development, and I think as a person in this neighborhood, I think we need to make that developer responsible for a third entrance over by Farrell and Racky Club. It's hard for me to imagine that all those cars are going to come out Whitewater Club Trail to go down Via Escola to get to downtown when there could be an entrance on that end to alleviate traffic in our neighborhood. And I I just would love to see the city make that developer responsible for that. All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, that does conclude public comment. We were able to reach everyone except for John Borrowman, which we've attempted to call four times.
Thank you. Thank you for everyone for participating. So to the applicant, you have two minutes for rebuttal if you choose to use it.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. So I think that I hopefully I was clear about our position relative to the third access, and I don't think it's necessarily that different or certainly not in conflict with what you heard from a lot of the Jean Autry residents. Now, the issue has come up, but you also have the issues that Flynn brought up, and we're certainly willing to work with you to to do what we can relative to the direction the city wants to go. Relative, and we said that the planning commission has asked for a lot of new conditions. That's not what we have in our agreement with you. Those the fencing that's on our property was not a city condition, and it's not a city statute, and it's not a requirement of the city. Otherwise, you'd have an awful lot of other lots in the city that would have to require fencing. We did that fencing, working with the neighbors, trying to see if we come up with a solution for the trespass. We continue to do that, and honestly, it's a losing battle dealing with young adults and their ATVs and their motorcycles and their trucks and their chains and their willingness to tear down fencing. It's been a battle, and some of you are quite familiar with what's going on with that battle, but that was done for the neighbors. It was not done as a city condition. And this we did provide, as I mentioned earlier, a record of what we've done. There is a legal agreement and a constraint against this property on record with a lawsuit that was worked out prior to our ownership. We paid through as a non-affected third party. We paid the legal fees for the settlement of that lawsuit back in two thousand and twelve as part of our acquisition, which very clearly talks about the maintenance of this property. So we are quite active with code enforcement, with fire, with police, trying to work out a lot of the issues that are out there. But this is a huge piece of property, and those issues are massive, and the development is a means to solve those issues, and we hope that we can go forward now and use the process of the development in order to clean this site up. Yes, it's a mess. It needs to be cleaned. It needs to be cleaned up.
And that is timely.
Millions and millions of dollars put up. Not now.
Thank you, sir. So that is your two minutes for rebuttal. So the public hearing is now closed. Is there any discussion or additional questions from council members? Mayor Protem.
Mr., I hope I pronounced this correctly. Fina?
That's pretty good. It's Faina.
Faina, thank you, and I apologize.
Very close. All good.
Please describe to us as quickly as you can what issue that you propose to do and give give council as hard a date as you possibly can as to under the various scenarios from best to worst. How soon would you begin construction, and how quickly would we see homes being constructed, and how many?
Sure. Thank you very much. I'll keep it very brief, and I'll answer any other questions you guys may have. As Eric said, I am Dan Fainham, the SoCal Division President of Williams Homes. We are a residential developer and home builder based in Southern California. We are very interested in seeing Serena Park come to life. It is a very exciting opportunity for us to build this development. We are under a binding purchase and sale agreement and intend to acquire the property should the requests be honored that are before you this evening. The development schedule revisions that are before you were the request that we worked out and presented back in April, hoping to move things along and get an answer a little sooner than where we stand today. So I would call those dates currently best-case scenario if everything went perfect and correct. But regardless, should we get the request before you approve this evening, we intend to move forward posthaste to close on this acquisition and bring the development to life. We would be under construction next year. It would be a race to have our first homeowner moved in by the end of two thousand twenty-two. It's likely early two thousand twenty-three the first homeowners would be moving in.
And how many homes would you build in the first phase?
I don't have the exact number off the top of my head in the first development phase. Eric, I'm not sure if you if you know that tribal knowledge, but we will. We will develop the whole first phase, initially start building homes in that phase while we start, you know, working on the development of the second phase.
There are eighty units of two different product types in the first phase, along with the public park.
Yeah, so we would we would initially start model homes in both product types and, say, an additional twenty-five homes the very first day that we start vertical construction.
So we're looking at twenty-five homes under best-case scenario by the end of two thousand twenty-three?
Oh, no, we're a phase builder, so we'll start homes every every four to six weeks and plan to build right through it. So a project of this size at Serena Park, three hundred and eighty-six homes, two product types, we would likely be building for two and a half years?
To build three hundred and eighty-six homes? All right. And please don't take offense. Why should I believe you?
I mean, you guys can. You're welcome to do research. We are a large-scale developer, family-owned company, williamshomes.com. We're based in Santa Clarita, California, so Northern L.A. County. We've been around twenty-five years. We post weekly videos, drone aerial videos of every single site we develop. We've built thousands of homes across California, Idaho, Montana, and Texas, and I would invite you to to research us, and anyone is welcome to reach out to me separately.
And how quickly would you have drawings for construction drawings to the planning department?
On the architecture for the homes? Architecture would take us maybe at most ninety days to develop and have submitted?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions and comments later on, but what the community is waiting for is to see homes built. And there are a lot of other questions we will get to, but none of this improves until homes get built.
Other questions for the applicant from council members? Council member Wood?
I think, let me see, Madam, you know. Mr. Faina, thank you, and I'll ask since you've been answering questions, I'll just follow up on Mayor Protem's questions to you, if that's okay. First of all, I want to thank you for having interest in the city of Palm Springs. I want to thank you very much. I think that, you know, we're a hot market right now, and I think it's a prime time to be building homes in Palm Springs, so I thank you for that. Did I understand you say that you're going to buy three hundred and eighty-six lots from Eric, from the developer?
Yeah, so our agreement provides for overtime to acquire all three hundred and eighty-six lots.
Okay. And can you talk a little bit? It sounds like you've done some preliminary work, even though you say you have your ninety days out and filing your applications for the homes, but can you talk to me just a little bit about the prototypes that you're looking at? Are they all single families? Are the single families with casitas? Kind of what are you looking at?
So we would actually intend to, and we'll have to go through and participate in a full architectural review to bring to bring the architecture to life. So we've seen some preliminary work that Eric and his team has done, the current owners of the property. We've spent a lot of time in the market and visited personally this site and every single active development in the city of Palm Springs myself, and so we will look to bring something very consistent with with what is current and, you know, desirable in the market. I don't have any actual drawings or specific that we could share. We're at a point where we've done our initial review and due diligence of all the aspects of the development agreement, the improvement plans, the schedule, the market, and, you know, these these items before you tonight are the items we need to take the next step to move forward with our purchase.
So it sounds to me, and just make sure that I'm correct, that you're just in the initial stages of purchasing the property, and you haven't really developed. Great, okay. Good. Thank you very much. And can I call you Eric, or how would you like to be addressed?
Daniel's the builder. Eric's the developer.
Right, right. I got that. So Eric, I guess I'm going to move to you. We've never met, so nice meeting you.
Likewise.
My name is Dennis Woods. I'm the council member in the district, along with Grace Gardner, that your development is in. So I'm sorry we've never met. That's a disadvantage, I think. But I want to just ask you a couple of questions. We just got Daniel just gave us an idea as a merchant builder, how long it might take him to get up and running. What about you putting in the infrastructure so that Daniel can even start his work of building or building his his homes?
Actually, actually, Dan does, but Dan puts the infrastructure in as part of building the homes.
Oh, I see. You're not the master developer then.
Correct.
So it's a little different model than what I've seen, that what we've seen in other
Yes.
master developments here in Palm Springs.
Correct, because developments like Ascena and and some of the other developments started, and the infrastructure was built, and then there was an economic setback, and then builders came in and built unfinished recorded lots, whereas our project is being built from scratch. So we actually have to do the mapping from the beginning, and that's why that's the difference.
And have you recorded your maps yet?
No.
Okay.
We produced and gone through. We started this, you know, again, this is back to the the COVID issue and all of that. We we went on parallel tracks after a first miss with a with another merchant builder right after the development agreement, and we prepared engineering drawings, but I went to our bank, and we came up with seventeen units, not all eighty, because we're a smaller firm by far than what Dan is, and although we we can act as a merchant builder, but I'd rather have somebody like Dan do it. And we have the two product types, but only seventeen lots as a sub-phase of Phase One. So we did all of the engineering for that. That's really the hard part of the engineering, because the beginning is where you make all your connections. That's where the street connections, the sewer connections, the storm drain, all of that got engineered and figured out, went through plan check at the city, went through Desert Water Agency. Those plans are all on file and have been provided to planning, and they have them, you know, for you to look at, and we went to we did full landscape improvement plans, went to Architectural Advisory Committee, and that included the infrastructure at the west end of the property by Four Seasons also. So that was included in Phase One, not just the area of Verona and Whitewater.
And and why haven't you recorded the maps yet?
Because we were talking to merchant builders, and hopefully they would record the maps because they would post them on.
I see, okay. You talked about in your presentation earlier, city projects. Were you referring, and then you later on in your rebuttal, I think you talked about a third access point?
Right.
You're looking at the city to take that on? Is that what you were kind of referring?
The the issue is a is a legal issue that Flynn described to you relative to CEQA. So you approved our project using a CEQA finding that had two access points, not three. So if you decided as the city to say, oh, we changed our minds, we really want to add a third access point, then you could do it on paper as a city project, bring it to your this council as a city project. You could vote on it. It's not a Serena Park project. It's a city project, but we are building that, we are spending the money to physically make the improvements, or Dan would spend the money to make those improvements. But the action and the decision is one that would be a decision by the city, not by us from our from our perspective. That's how we brought it to you before, and that's how we're still presenting it. But because of the CEQA action that's done, we couldn't change our project without having to redo our CEQA documentation, and we're not willing to take that risk.
And I just, having done many CEQA documents myself and having been a professional transportation planner
Yes.
most of my life, we're not generating any more trips.
Right.
So the CEQA, the CEQA component of this will be miniscule.
Yes, of course.
Right.
And we already did, and we already did the model. We paid for and did the traffic model. I don't think there's been many changes. Can you take that model and redo it? I I don't see a problem with that.
Right, and I would think that you're not generating any more trips, so if you disperse it, it actually makes less impact everywhere else
Correct.
on the project.
Right, which is the manager findings that you could make.
Right, I don't see that as a barrier.
No.
So let's say that we took one of, let's say that we took your model and we took the project down as the lead, which is what you're asking, then we came up with a third access point. How do we then coordinate with you on that? Let's say that it was approved to have a third access point.
Then you would come to us and say, this is what we approved. We need you to modify your engineering plans to reflect this third access point and build it.
And your willingness to do that?
Yes.
You're willing to do that? Okay, great. Thank you. I, you know, it seems to me that we can do a couple of things. The neighbors are asking for a third that we can do a couple of things. The neighbors are asking for a third access point. They're asking rather strongly for a third access point. The Planning Commission has asked for an access point, and in the 2016 staff report that went to City Council, I will read it, "City Council directed staff to work with the applicant to designate a third vehicular access point to the development." Has that been done?
There is a third access point, but it's gated. It's the end of Francis. That's what's currently in the plan. That's what's in our project.
Right.
Gated access.
Right.
And the feedback that I've got is that be not gated, that it be a public access point.
Okay. And you're, again, your willingness to make that public if we had to?
Yes.
Okay. I was, I was a little concerned of, it seems like the timing to actually get built, you know, we obviously, as I think Mayor Protem said, are looking for sooner rather than later, just because of all the ills that are happening on the site.
Right.
And I think the timing is going to be a little bit longer, but now that I understand that Mr. Dana will actually be putting in the backbone infrastructure, it makes more sense that your timing would be accurate, because you're not layering that on top of Eric's timing.
That is correct.
I was a little concerned, Eric, that you're, they ask you to clean out the tamarisk trees, of which, where you have some damage you're started, but you said it was a lot of money, and I was concerned that you don't have money to do this development. If you can't clean out tamarisk trees, how can you do a huge development?
There is so much upfront money in a project like this, as just as a business. In Phase One, it's unheard of for a developer to actually make money. They're in the red. You have 80 units, we've got a one and a half million dollar public park. It's not that whether we have money or don't have money, but when you do a development, you take on bank debt. You've got to show that you can pay that debt back. You put up equity in order to put the project together and show to the bank. You've got to prove to your partners that you're going to get that back. There's not enough to get out of the first 80 units. That doesn't work from a business standpoint.
So one of the things you're, thank you, and one of the things you're asking for is basically a deferral of undergrounding utilities, which is very expensive.
Yes.
And I understand they're very expensive. Are you willing to put up a financial surety or something that would guarantee that that will actually be done if you do fail on your first part?
Let me try to back up and explain to you what the situation is out there, because I think it's become very confusing. I've tried to explain it to people four or five times, and that's why I took, you know, at least I got two of your council members out in the field to see it. Those aren't our underground utilities. Those are Desert Park Estates' underground utilities. It's a normal condition, and it's all about maintenance. So we're not doing it for aesthetic reasons. We're not doing it to serve Serena Park. It's about maintenance that Edison has to have access to those utilities. It's not about the amount of money that it takes to put those utilities in, which I've been accused of. That's not an issue either. It is the time and the sequence, and the fact that when we presented this project to the city, we explained this and said, because of the convoluted geography of this project, we need to phase it sequentially because of the capital outlays. It doesn't make sense to be spending millions of dollars a mile away from the area that we're building homes. It would sink anybody business-wise, and back to my bank comment, how do you get debt from a bank if you can't show that you can pay it back? Those neighbors, all 45 of them in Desert Park Estates, individually have to agree to allow that new, that power line to go underneath their streets in front of them and connect to their front yards. Right now, it's in their backyards, going through their backyards for connection. What happens if Uncle Leo in Louisville, Kentucky, is 92 years old, doesn't want to sign that easement? We've got to deal with him. How long is that going to take? It might take a couple of years to get all that done, plus all the contracts with Edison. And we don't even have the slightest clue what Edison's going to ask for. And there isn't, dry utilities aren't bonded for. There's a deposit made to Edison when you get a work order, and Edison won't claim what that deposit is until they decide what the nature of the project is, and we don't know that yet.
So I think what I was getting at, Eric, is that we have a lot of half-built projects in this city.
Yes.
We hate to go down that road again.
Right.
And so I was looking for some financial security that could be put up, or something that would give us really some sort of hook to keep your feet to the fire, to keep the project going.
Well, you have financial security on the bonds that are issued for each phase as the track maps come up.
Okay, I don't know if that's sufficient, but I think you kind of answered the question. Thanks. I was going to ask staff a question. I think Flynn, you are prepared with a slideshow to show kind of what has been done with the, since the 2016 staff report where they directed the staff to work with the applicant to develop a third access point?
If I could have the PowerPoint again? So as part of the discussions relative to the approval of the development in 2016, there was much discussion at the public hearings about a third access point. The one that has been brought up most frequently is at the corner of, closest to Verona and Farrell. What this entails is the gate to the Whitewater Country Club. One of the issues with this access point, as illustrated on this map, is that that is a private street where the gate is currently. There is a small stub of public right-of-way, but the rest of it is private property. And so consequently, where you see the cul-de-sacs in this map example here on the screen, we wouldn't be able to take access because it is private property. It is my understanding that Mr. Taylor met with the HOAs, I believe there's five HOAs within that area that are behind the gate. Mr. Taylor met with those HOAs and was unable to get an agreement with them relative to providing access. And so consequently, that one is not one that would be readily available to do. The second possible access point is the termination of Francis at Farrell Drive. Now, in this instance, we do have public right-of-way up to the edge of the property. It is currently approved as an emergency access-only point, and that was the result of the city council approval in 2016. And so that would be gated currently and would be available for police and fire to access the development. We did do an addendum to the traffic study, looking at this as an access point, and what that traffic study revealed is that it would result in only about a 5% to 7% reduction in traffic at the two access points that have been approved. Also, there was quite a lot of opposition from neighbors. I believe there was a comment earlier from one of the residents of the Geontry Association saying that the access or the traffic from the project should be borne equally by all surrounding developments. And I don't think that's an incorrect statement. So this would be the most likely third access point based on the issues that we've encountered looking at other possible access points for the development. One of the ones that I didn't discuss, there was talk early on in the process about possibly going across the wash. We did investigate that, but had issues in terms of crossing tribal property in order to do that. And so those are the two viable options that we have. But when it comes right down to it, it is the Francis access point that would be the one that would be most readily available.
Mike, thank you. I have one more question before I let the other council members talk, and then we can have comments. And this is to the city attorney, maybe, or to Flynn. But, you know, state law has changed, and it allows you to build duplexes on single-family lots. Would that apply here?
Once it's built out, yes. SB9 would apply.
So if they come in and want to just put duplexes on each lot during the architectural review, that does not apply?
It would be subject to a ministerial process with the city.
So what I'm getting at is, if state law has changed, and they can build duplexes or homes with casitas that can be rented out separately on each lot, that could potentially double the traffic? Or do we have a way to say that only single-family homes can be built on these lots?
We do not have a way of overriding SB9, no.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Can I follow up on that line of questioning, if I can, city attorney? So the law in the city and in the state regarding housing has changed significantly since this project was approved. So could you detail what that looks like? Because obviously, there's golf course conversion ordinance, change in density, density bonuses, cities including inclusionary housing, and then obviously SB9 and others. So could you just tell us that landscape and what applies to the project as it is now?
Sure. I mean, most of the changes in state law since this project was approved really have to do more with the processing of land use, residential land use entitlements in terms of the ability of cities to require less density than the underlying zoning provides for, and ensuring that there's no loss of density within a community. This, this project is fully entitled, though. And other than some laws that have to do with ADUs and additional dwelling units, that most of the laws don't, wouldn't really apply to this project. Our inclusionary housing ordinance, we're still developing that, so that is, that would not be applicable to this project.
Thank you. That was a hard question on the spot. So I see that back in 2016, when the project was approved, the city council approved a resolution approving a general plan amendment to modify the land use designation from open space, parks and rec, to very low-density residential. Is that right? So that's the underlying zoning?
That is the underlying general plan designation, yes.
Thank you. Can I ask a question for the applicant? What's the price point of the homes? You're muted, sir.
Christie, I'm going to defer to Daniel on this, because he's coming in as the builder, and he would be
Thank you.
That's always the million-dollar question. So we look at the current market comps, and we have an opinion if the homes were to be offered for sale today, what they would be selling for, what they would be sold for when we're finally moving our first homeowners in, you know, about a year and a half from now. Could be dramatically different, you know, positive or negative. But it seems the average price points from our latest market study probably has these mostly in the 600s as an average. So, but we'll build a wide range of products, so prices lower than that and probably higher as well.
Thank you. I'm trying to phrase this right for the city attorney. Can you explain? So right now, we're considering these changes, and we're at a sort of stalemate with the Planning Commission recommendations, and then the applicant saying that they cannot adopt those. So then, I think Mayor Protem asked this before, but then what happened? What would happen to the entitlements and the development agreement?
So it might be helpful to kind of reframe what the applicant's request is. It's really clarification or modification of the tentative map condition of approval for undergrounding of utilities, and then a request for an extension of time for the phasing and the payment of the development agreement fee. As Mr. Fag indicated, the council has plenary authority to either accept those two requests, or deny them, or accept them in part. With regard to the Planning Commission's recommended actions, the same is true. The council can accept those recommendations, or reject them, or accept some of them. With regard to the modifications to the development agreement, because it's an agreement that requires the consent of both the city and the developer, if the city approves the recommendations of the Planning Commission and the developer does not agree to those, then there's no meeting of the minds, and there's no amendment to the development agreement. And it really is the status quo, which is an impending requirement to pay the development agreement fee. So that's what would happen.
And then it would be the applicant in breach of the development agreement?
Yes, we would, we would look at the timelines under the existing development agreement, some of which they would have already missed. And then if they do not pay the development agreement fee in November of this year, then they would be in breach, and the city would have to go through a process that's set forth in the development agreement to establish that breach and essentially terminate the development agreement. They would still have the underlying land use entitlements for the development of the project. They just wouldn't have the benefit of the vesting that the development agreement provides, and the city would not have the benefit of the development agreement fee.
I see. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that for me. Other questions or comments from council members? Councilmember Corr, and then councilmember Garner, and then Mayor Proton Middleton.
I just have a clarifying question for the city attorney on some of the new state laws. And not that this is being proposed by the applicant, but just so the committee understands them. And I think what Councilmember Woods was asking, we understand that the new state law, some multifamily can be built on single-family lots. And I wasn't clear from the city attorney if that only applies to existing single-family homes, or would it apply in this case where the developer would have the right under those laws to build two homes on the lots in question? Not that I'm saying I'm for or against that. That's a separate conversation, but just to clarify to the public, what exactly is allowed?
It's a new law, and I would need to take a look at this to confirm, but I believe the developer could do that as part of the construction itself.
And then, you want to follow up, and then you, Eric, just up. So in that case, let's say they decided to do that. How does that impact SEQA and traffic studies, et cetera? And you may not know the answer. I did not think to ask this question until Councilmember Woods made me think of it. So blame Dennis.
Well, I think to the extent it is a ministerial approval process, SEQA arguably would not apply to the incremental addition of those, those other units.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor, go ahead.
Jeff, I'm going to do my best to try to answer the questions that you've all have come up with. That, I think there's some practicality issues here, and then some decisions from the city. Number one, the majority of our lots are fairly small, and we're restricted under a development agreement, which is a contract with you to a certain density, certain number of units, and a height limitation of 19 feet, which means we can't go up and put an ADU or a second unit over the top of a garage. There's just no space. And if the project gets built out, and homeowners are in there, and they come back to you with an ADU, an ADU, one, it's where are they going to put it? There's really not a lot of space to it. And two, if you really wanted to do something like that, let's say it was a city consensus that you guys want more units for housing or other reasons, you know, you might want to control that process, but that becomes a whole separate action and, as you mentioned, SEQA. I don't know if that helps you, but from a physical practicality standpoint, it's quite difficult with the size of the lots we have to put two on there.
Thank you.
Councilmember Garner was next and then Mayor Protem Middleton.
Thank you. I just want to state initially for the record that I've had extensive conversations with Eric Taylor and Matthew Heverman about this project. It sounds like probably more conversations than anyone else on council, largely about tamarisk trees, but also, like Mr. Taylor said, I walked out on the property, so just Council, Mayor Protem Middleton, to see the site location and just find out what other community improvements could be done within this project, specifically discussing the paving of the road and fixing the speed bump into the Golden Sands neighborhood, which would be done at the same time that the road was extended into the project, and also talking about the undergrounding and the issues regarding ATVs, et cetera. So, these are all issues that my residents have brought to me, which is what led to these discussions with Eric Taylor. And then, of course, as the project moved along, became discussions of this, issues with the Planning Commission and the development. That said, for, so that the public understands what we discussed, to the City Attorney, I'm a little bit confused after your answer to the mayor because it's my understanding that the applicant is saying that they do not want to, they're not asking for an amendment to the development agreement. That's what the attorney called in to say and that they're, that really, the city is saying that the development agreement would need to be amended in order to accommodate the request from the developer, but the developer is saying that this should be just basically a matter, the phasing of the undergrounding is a matter, of course, and it doesn't require the amendment of the development agreement. Is that correct?
So, there are two separate issues. One is the undergrounding, which is a condition, which is primarily a condition of approval of the tentative map, which the city has already approved. The second issue is the development agreement and the developer's request for essentially relief from the timeframes in the development agreement. The developer and their attorney are asserting that they don't need an amendment to the development agreement, that essentially the force majeure provisions of the development agreement authorize them to come to the city and ask for kind of an interpretation of the development agreement that would allow for the modification of the timelines. Staff in my office met with the developer earlier this year and advised them that we thought that an amendment would be required and they submitted an application for that. So, yes, there is a difference of opinion between city staff, my office, and the developers in terms of what they need. Staff in my office believe that a modification is an appropriate avenue for the development agreement and not a force majeure modification. It's up to the City Council if you wish to take a different approach, though. If you want to take the developer's approach and amend it via kind of a force majeure interpretation, the City Council can do that. That's really, though, only with regard to the milestones. There still is the underlying condition of approval for the tentative map with regard to the undergrounding.
Okay, thank you very much. And just to add one more thing, the other part of the conversation that I've had with Mr. Taylor related to that third access point, I do not want to forget that for my ginatri residents.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you. And I'm going to try to keep this really quick. Could, I see the map of the entire project posted for us.
If we could have the TV station go back to the PowerPoint. Mayor Protem, here is the map of the entire development.
Okay, thank you. So, this is a question regarding the 45 homes for which there is going to need to be undergrounded. And I don't know if this is a question for Mr. Taylor, Mr. Fana, or for Flynn, but those 45 homes are not within the project that you're building. They are homes in the Desert Sands neighborhood. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. They're in Desert Park Estates.
Okay, Desert Park Estates, excuse me. I should never get that wrong. The, you're building a new road for the new homes that you will put in.
Yes.
The electrical service, the undergrounding of utilities that will serve those new homes will be placed in the new road that you're building. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Will those utility lines extend under the property line to the existing homes that are in the Desert Park neighborhood? Or will you be actually digging up Joyce and Farrell and accessing and putting in a new utility, underground utility line to service those homes from the existing streets in the existing neighborhood?
The latter is true. So, we, our system is not connected directly to the Desert Park Estates neighborhood. So, the power lines that we're talking about undergrounding go into Joyce and Farrell and the small cul-de-sacs.
All right. Very good. So, I think that really needs to be clear. When we start talking about phasing, this is something that's really different. This is a issue of taking and putting undergrounding utilities on 45 existing homes that currently have service and only need to be under grounded because that's the only way to take and develop the property on the other side of the fence. So, and again, I have walked the property. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I know this is such a complex issue, the legal issues here, but just in the interest of time, so we're at 8:46. Would council like to deliberate? Is there a motion? Can we get to that point and then see if we have additional questions for the parties? Councilmember Woods?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll give you my point of view and then we'll see if there's a motion or something that comes out of that. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Taylor for saying that he would be responsive to a third entrance. I think our residents, the staff reports, the Planning Commission reports, all say that the council directed staff to work with the applicant to designate a third access point. I think we can still do that and we should keep that as part, keep that on, keep that rolling and not get lost. I think it's very important to many people and maybe other people are opposed, but we can go through the process and find out what that is. And I think that would solve that problem. As regards to the phasing, I'm okay with it. I would just like to talk to the City Attorney about assurance or the planning director about assurances to make sure that we get that done in the process so that we don't end up with a half-built project. I don't necessarily want to lose our benefit of collecting $3 million to use for open space elsewhere, which we may lose if this development agreement falls apart. But I do like the Planning Commission's suggestions, so we can talk about that as a council as a whole.
Thank you, Councilmember Woods. Did you want a response from city staff?
No, I think we can just talk between ourselves right now.
Thank you. Comments? Was that a motion, Councilmember Woods?
Well, I don't know how to frame the motion because I'm not sure about the Planning Commission recommendations about paying a million dollars upfront and $2 million later, one, and two, maintaining the site, you know, removing some of the tamarisk trees, maintaining the site, because it sounds like it's going to be a couple more years before we see anything vertical, and that's being optimistic. And in that time, I understand by Mr. Taylor, it's very difficult to manage the site, but I think certain things could be done. So, I would try and find a way to mitigate some of those ills. It sounds like Mr. Taylor's not in agreement to pay a million dollars now and two later and he's not in agreement to secure the site and do some cleanup. Is that correct, Mr. Taylor?
Not exactly.
Good, okay.
So, how to explain this? We've been working ad hoc on this project. So, people come up to us and I heard tonight that we've got a problem at Barona and Whitewater and we've got a contractor out there and we'll go look at it now and go fix it. We worked, we had a problem with Four Seasons and we're ripping out 1,000 feet of tamarisk trees and their roots because we tried, we took out many, many tamarisk trees, but we tried to do it at the stump and use poison. It didn't work. So, now we're using a different method. To have it as an additional condition imposed upon us after we have a development agreement approved and after we have a legal encumbrance against the property that was negotiated years ago that we followed, we're saying no fair. Pure and simple, no. I just want to be clear about that. If we work with you and code enforcement and the fire department and the neighbors, we're totally good with that. That works. We can do that. To the, to the payment of the fees, we can arrange to have some fees made in good faith in November. Are we willing to put up a million dollars? No. Can we, you've got a council committee that is set up for Sarita Park. We can negotiate this on TV or we can have a discussion at the council committee with the two council members and the city manager and the city attorney and come up with something that works. We might be here for a long time tonight if we start talking about dollars. But that's your, that's your decision, but that's where we're coming from.
Thank you. Any advice from our staff members?
We apologize for the delay in responding. It's a lot to come up with, how we might address the concerns that have been brought up relative to the maintenance of the property and the fees on the spot. In terms of looking at the maintenance issues, the applicant or the property owners indicated that they're already working on removing tamarisk trees and that was certainly one of the items that the Planning Commission had concerns about. I don't know, other than convening a meeting of the applicant with city staff, including representatives from police, from code compliance and from planning, to go through the maintenance concerns and perhaps develop some type of a program that we can address those in the short term, understanding that if the amendments to the development agreement are approved, Mr. Fana and Williams Homes will be working to begin relatively shortly in terms of getting approvals for infrastructure and will be working on the site. So, to a certain degree, mobilization by Williams Homes will address some of the concerns relative to maintenance. So, again, I think as perhaps an interim measure or an alternative measure to what the Planning Commission is suggesting, that staff and the applicant might be able to work on a maintenance plan that we can implement and have in place until Williams Homes is on the site and doing construction. Relative to the fee, again, city council can negotiate with the property owner in terms of the payment and timing of that fee. So, if city council members want to work with staff in meeting with the property owner and determining what you would like to see upfront versus what may be delayed until November of 2022, we would be more than happy to work with council in doing that.
So, we could basically approve it in concept with maybe a subcommittee of two council members, maybe the police and whatnot, and come up with some of the language? Or does that need to come back to city council then? I'm trying to expedite it for everybody is what I'm trying to do, but yet, address the concerns that have been posed to us.
So, we would probably want to bring that back to the city council as a whole after negotiating terms. So, maybe within 30 days, we would come back to the city council, just as a suggestion.
Councilmember Garner?
Thank you. And thanks, Councilmember Woods, for asking all of that. I think that's really helpful. Eric, I wanted to just ask about the 1,000 feet of tamarisk trees, just to get a little bit of clarification. I know we've, you and I have talked about this so much. So, this is just preliminary, right? You're going to be continuously taking out trees until they're all gone, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, this is just the first initial part you're doing?
Well, it's probably about the fifth attempt to do it, but we're maybe a little more serious this time.
Okay, great. Yeah, I, and I-
We were worried, we were really worried about blow sand and the effect of, you know, taking out those roots and what were they going to do because they go into the neighbors' properties? We talked about this. It's harder to do than not, but we were out there with all the Four Seasons people and management and residents and agreed to agree on how we're proceeding.
Okay, great. And so, it's beginning with the Four Seasons properties. Okay, thank you. That's just a little bit of clarification. But in general, so, like I said, I've talked to a lot of residents on this issue, talked to a lot with Mr. Taylor, Mr. Heverman on this issue and along with city staff. We actually did a walkthrough with code enforcement, with police, with fire, with planning department. And I think what I've been hearing from residents is that there is some frustration with this project, but mostly the frustration lies in the fact that it has not been done yet and everybody wants to see it developed. And even when, I've talked to the folks in the southern part of the project, I guess you could say if you're orienting, well, whatever, the other part of the project in the ginatri area, they're also generally, I'm saying generally, okay with it. They just want that third access point. But I'd really, really like to see us move forward with this project, but I also want to make sure that we do see that it is going to actually move forward. In terms of the security issues, there are a lot of security issues because there are a lot of folks who drive out there on ATVs. There are, of course, trespassers that go on foot. I don't hear as many concerns about that, although there are some. So, the only thing I would ask with the requirements in terms of securing the site is that it's not so onerous that it delays the actual building because I think we all know that once the building starts happening, that's going to be the bigger deterrent and the best way to move forward in terms of preventing a lot of those issues of access to the property. I'm also fine with being on a subcommittee to discuss these issues. Like I said, I've already been doing that to a certain extent. So, I would like to propose that we move forward with the project and create that security plan and create that monetary amount to move forward to get, to get some teeth into this initially and that we also move forward with the process of discussing with the public that third access point. Am I leaving anything out? So, that would be my motion.
Councilmember Woods and then Councilmember Coors.
Mr. Taylor, would you, so we can get to, I'm trying to get to resolution. I think that Councilmember Garner is trying to do the same and to appease some of the ills that we've had. If we looked at a payment plan right now, would you be, you're not willing to do a million dollars, but you said you're willing to do an amount of money. Would $500,000 work?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Coors?
I was going to say the exact same thing. I was going to suggest that we ask the developer if you would do that now or on November 1st as part of the motion. If motion maker and secondor were good with that, but I think that's already been said. But I support that, I guess. said, so, but I support that, I guess.
Thank you. So staff, you heard a motion in a second. Is there further clarification you need on that language or the direction?
Madam Mayor, if I can just summarize the points that I heard relative to the motion. In terms of the performance schedule and the undergrounding of utilities, city council would approve those amendments to the development agreement. Relative to the payment, the city would require $500,000 payable on November the 1st of 2021, with the balance of 2.5 million payable on November 1st of 2022. Within the next 30 days, the property owner and city staff will work on a maintenance and security plan for the property, which will be brought back to the city council for review and approval on the consent agenda. And so that would bring us back on November 4th with a maintenance and security plan for the property. Madam Mayor, that is what I understand the motion to be. Is that accurate?
Thank you, Councilmember Garner. Is that accurate?
The third access point, we just discussed, you know, third access point.
My apologies. We'll include that as part of your direction to staff.
Yes, that's correct.
That's correct, and I accept.
Thank you. Any further discussion? City clerk, do you need a vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Can we roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Corse.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Middleton.
Aye.
Mayor Holstich.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you to the applicant and his team for being here tonight and being so honest and open with us. We appreciate the discussion and again, your investment in the city of Palm Springs and your adding to our housing stock, which we very much need and appreciate. So thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you all for hearing us out.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
And Madam Mayor, I'll read the ordinance title, which is in ordinance of the city council of the city of Palm Springs, California, amending section 94.08.09 of the Palm Springs Palm Springs zoning code and approving a development agreement amendment with PS Country Club LLC related to the Serena Park project performance schedule for construction, the development agreement fee, payment date, and other minor revisions related to the conversion of the Palm Springs Country Club Golf Course into 386 residential units located north of Verona Road, east of Sunrise Way, and southwest of the Whitewater River Wash. Thank you.
Thank you, city clerk. So here we are, it's 9:00 PM. We're in a situation, so we are going to go to public comment on non-agenda items because it's 9 o'clock and that's what we told the public. Mayor Protim, would you like to take a break before then? Thank you. So we will take a 10-minute break, is all we can afford. Um, so 10-minute break, we will go into recess and come back at 9:10, and then we will contact public comment speakers by telephone. Thank you.
Let's go ahead and come back from recess. So the next item on the agenda is public comment on non-agenda items. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the city council on items of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. Although the city values your comments pursuant to the Brown Act, it cannot generally take any action on items not listed on the agenda. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. City Clerk, if you could please begin contacting speakers by telephone.
Jacob Simon, you're live with the Palm Springs Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Hi there. My name is Jacob Simon. I'm here so there may be a consideration in the city's ordinances for people like me who are using the First Amendment rights in publicly speaking on documented cases of extreme injustice and corruption within the federal government. While using a megaphone, given this megaphone is used with special consideration of those around, both civilian and commercial, a consideration I most seriously intend to act on. Right now, I am required to pay for a $300 permit with money I do not have in order to be able to use any form of sound amplification in public. I ask you to consider a person who is walking in public using a small speaker to listen to music and without the expensive permit, all while being courteous of others and not making their speaker too loud as to bother others. As things are, they're breaking the law and indeed deserving to be punished for their innocuous actions.
Jacob?
This permit.
Jacob Simon, you can go ahead and restart your comments.
All right, thank you. My name is Jacob Simon. I'm here so there may be a consideration in the city's ordinances for people like me who are using their First Amendment rights in publicly speaking on documented cases of extreme injustice and corruption within the federal government while using a megaphone, given this megaphone is used with special consideration of those around, both civilian and commercial, a consideration I most seriously intend to act on. Right now, I am required to pay for a $300 permit with money I do not have in order to be able to use any form of sound amplification in public. I ask you to consider a person who is walking in public using a small speaker to listen to music and without the expensive permit, all while being courteous of others and not making their speaker too loud as to bother others. As things are, they're breaking the law and indeed deserving to be punished for their innocuous actions. This permit, the only permit available, is meant for special events, given its name, quote, "special event permit," end quote. I am not a special event. I'm not selling anything, I'm not trying to be so big in your face and ear splitting like a special event for which the permit is meant for. You see, this city does not even have a permit for me. Someone who wishes to use their most basic American right to free speech, instead they only have one for wealthy organizations using blaring speakers you can hear blocks and blocks away. Now, I understand that I am fine with having to fill out a form, but $300 is discriminatory. However, I'm here not just for myself, but for all others who are too poor to have their voice, not just simply uttered like a whisper, but rather courteously heard. And if you would think I'm not trying hard enough to be heard, please believe me when I say, "I tried and I lost my voice a few minutes through my speech." It hurt to talk. I feel that you would agree with me, the founding fathers did not intend for the First Amendment, our most sacred one, to be rights only given to the wealthy, thus discriminating against the American people. If you believe, as I do, that our First Amendment rights must be protected, certainly when persons are trying their best and most reasonably to be heard on documented cases of significant governmental injustice and corruption, then I please ask of you to make clear in the city's ordinances that one must not have to pay $300 when they're acting out not as a deafeningly loud and wealthy organization, but rather as an individual exercising their First Amendment right to freedom of speech, given that the person has taken reasonable precautions to ensure that those in proximity will not be unduly burdened by the sound. If you have questions about what specific content my speech consists of, I will gladly answer those questions. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, that does conclude public comment.
Thank you so much. Thank you to the caller who called in. As I said before, we are unable to respond because of the Brown Act. It's not agendized on our agenda. But please do email us to discuss these issues, and we'd be happy to talk to you that way. Okay, so we are going to go through the rest of the agenda, and we're going to ask for brevity and quick motions, and we'll try to make a lot of our discussion in the discussion portion after a motion and a second, if I can move to more formal business running of the meeting. So the next item is item 2B, an application by the city of Palm Springs for historic designation of the Robert Alexander Residence, AKA The House of Tomorrow, located at 1350 Ladera Circle, APN number 505-082-026, HSPP number 136. Can we have a staff report, please?
Madam Mayor.
And I will also ask staff for brief staff reports if we can. Thank you.
I will be happy to oblige. Just very briefly, the residence was designed by architect William Kreisel and built for the Alexanders, who were part of the Alexander Construction Company. There is also an association with Mr. Elvis Presley. The HSPP found that it meets the criteria for designation as a Class 1 or landmark structure, and so the HSPP and staff recommend approval of Class 1 designation. Thank you.
That was a short staff presentation. Thank you. So next, we have questions for staff before we open up the public hearing. Councilmember Corr.
I don't have any questions, sorry.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff before we open the public hearing? Seeing none, I'd like to open the public hearing. The public is invited to speak on this public hearing for up to two minutes. City Clerk, are there any speakers?
Yes, and I'll begin calling.
Thank you.
Dan Bridge, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you. ... or landmark structure, and so the HSPP and staff recommend...
Mr. Bridge?
Okay, should I start now?
Yes.
Okay, would my comments start now?
Yes.
Okay. Dear Mayor Holstich, Mayor Protem Middleton, and City Council members, I'm reading a letter composed by owner representative Robert Bernheimer. I have the privilege of representing the owners of 1350 Ladera Circle, a property now before the city council for Class 1 historic designation. I apologize for being unable to appear before you for this city council hearing, but I had a previously scheduled event that could not be changed. We are in full support of this application by the city. In fact, the current owners paid for the report that's being used as a basis for this application. We are committed to having this remarkable property designated as a Class 1 resource.
Did you want to speak on item 2B? Oh, okay, well then, give me one second.
Should I start again?
You can just continue on from where you were.
I don't know where I was. Because I... ... the property... ... is... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300... ... 300...
Thank you. And did Paul also want to speak tonight?
No.
Okay.
Only if there are questions.
Okay, we will disconnect, and if council has questions, I'll call you back.
Okay, thanks.
Madam Mayor, that concludes public comment for this public hearing.
Are there any questions for city staff, or is there a motion or discussion from council?
I would move staff recommendation.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Councilmember Corr.
Yes.
Mayor Holstich.
Yeah.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. The next item is item 2C, a public hearing to consider an application for historic designation of the Goldberg Residence, located at 2340 South Ridge Drive. Can we have a staff report, please?
Madam Mayor and members of the city council, this item is a request for designation of the Goldberg Residence, which was designed by William Cody and constructed in 1963. The property has been beautifully restored. The property has had some minor additions to it, but still retains a high degree of integrity. The Historic Site Preservation Board found that it met three of the criteria for designation, and so consequently, HSPP and staff do recommend approval of Class 1 landmark designation for this property. That concludes my presentation and happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for city staff before we open the public hearing? Seeing none, I would like to open the public hearing. The applicant will have up to five minutes if they choose to provide their testimony, and the public is invited to speak on this public hearing for up to two minutes. City Clerk, do we have any speakers?
You are live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments, and if you could begin by please stating your name.
This is David Simp, and I'm... ... will be very brief. We would be happy to answer any questions if you have any, and I also wanted to thank the staff for their great report and the HP... ... screwing my initials up, but HPVC for the unanimous recommendation, and Robert Boden for writing the spectacular nomination.
Thank you. City Clerk, that was the applicant, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect. So you do have up to five minutes. I just want to correct what the city clerk said, but thank you for your brevity. But feel free to use your five minutes.
It's been a long night. Thank you for your time.
And you want to speak on the Goldberg Residence? Okay. Great, thank you. Okay, Michael, we are going to disconnect now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, that does conclude public comment for this hearing.
Thank you, and I just want to say, we're not rushing through these because they're simple. There's so much beautiful work that's gone into these homes and to the reports, and it's just amazing to learn about the history. So thank you to everyone for your work on these. Councilmember Corr.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I did want to encourage the public, these are online, so just reading the history and the photos are incredible. I did want to share that I have been to this house since its renovation by the owners, and it's spectacular. They really restored it with such love and care, and I'm pleased to move this item. Staff recommendation for the criteria listed.
Thank you. So there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, City Clerk, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Corr.
Yes.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Middleton.
Aye.
Mayor Holstich.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Thank you everyone for your work on these, and yes, please, the public, please look at these reports online. The next item is item... ... C. 2...
B.
B. Not what my form says, but the next item is item 2D, request by PS Social Group, Inc. for a resolution of public convenience or necessity, PCN, for a tight 20 package store for a carryout craft beer and organic wine shop.
Madam Mayor, this item was amended, and it was reordered to be as a consent item, item 1Q.
Thank you. The next item is 2E, a public hearing to consider a resolution approving a disposition and development agreement with ALO Palm Canyon LP for the development of a certain real property located at 1479 North Palm Canyon Drive, allocating $400,000 in housing successor agency funds and declaring the property as exempt surplus land. Can we have a staff report, please?
Madam Mayor, you've described the project. It is located at the southwest corner of North Palm Canyon Drive and West Stevens Road on a 1.75 acre site, which has two parcels, one parcel owned by the city and the other owned by the successor agency for the city. So a quick update on the successor agency parcel, the city council, acting as a successor agency, has already approved the sale of that parcel, and the county oversight board has also approved that parcel, and the entitlements for this project were approved on January 14th of this year. So what's unique about this particular public hearing is that the sale of the city-owned parcel requires this public hearing to provide members of the public an opportunity to protest the sale of the city-owned parcel. If no protests are received, the city may proceed with the sale. If protests are received and the city council overrules the protest by a four-fifths vote, it may proceed with the sale. And as you've mentioned, the council is also being asked to approve the disposition and development agreement, the appropriation of $400,000 in housing successor agency funds, and declaring the city parcel as exempt surplus land. I do want to mention a technical correction on page 234, that's 2E, 234, that budget there should be removed. It's in the wrong spot. The numbers, however, are correct. And I can get into the details of the disposition and development agreement if you like, but if not, we can proceed with questions and public hearing.
Thank you, Director. Are there any questions for staff? Seeing none, I would like to open the public hearing. The public is invited to speak on this public hearing for up to two minutes. City Clerk, please conduct public comment.
Hello, Rob. Rob Bergstein, you're live with the Palm Springs Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Rob Bergstein, and I recently moved to the Coachella Valley from West Hollywood, where for the last 20 years I was a city commissioner. I have direct firsthand knowledge of the incredible work the West Hollywood Community Housing Corporation does, building, managing, and maintaining affordable housing. I have known a number of people who were lucky enough to be able to move into the housing corporation's buildings, often from squall of apartments in unsafe neighborhoods, and I can tell you without a doubt, this housing changed their lives dramatically. Some of them continue to this day to live in their housing corporation apartment, some moved after their life situation changed, and some lived there until they passed away. I cannot overemphasize the extraordinary work that the housing corporation does in providing critically needed affordable housing, and I am so pleased that the residents of Palm Springs will have the benefit of their work here and urge council to take all steps necessary so that this project comes to fruition. Then if you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening.
Thank you. Kathy Wormick, you're live with the Palm Springs Council and have two minutes to provide your comments.
Hi, my name is Kathy Wormick, and I'm just calling in to express very strong support for this project. The affordable housing is really needed, and we should do everything we can to assist West Hollywood with finishing the project and obtaining all of their financing. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, that concludes public comment for this hearing.
Thank you to everyone for calling in for public comment. The public hearing is now closed. Is there any additional discussion or questions or a motion from the council? Councilmember Garner.
I'd like to move to approve and just want to very simply state for the public that this is the next step in the process to get this affordable housing development built in our, oh, really, our almost downtown area, right? So it's very exciting, and I'm happy that we're moving forward quickly on this.
Thank you. So there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it with the same comments made by Councilmember Garner. This is the same project.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Corr.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Middleton.
Aye.
Mayor Holstich.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is 5A, consideration of accepting a donation of artwork entitled Palm Springs AIDS Memorial and approval of placement in the downtown park. Can we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a request from the Public Arts Commission to approve the AIDS Memorial Public Arts Project for the downtown park. At the June 16th, 2021 Public Arts Commission meeting, the commission unanimously approved a motion to accept the donation of the AIDS memorial sculpture by Philip K. Smith. The piece will be carved out of limestone and will be supported on a 15 by 15-foot foundation. It will include signage and artwork with the name of a website linked to a database for names and stories of individuals being memorialized, along with the links to local health and educational resources. The location of the sculpture will be in the center of the downtown park, located at the northwest corner of Museum Road and Bellardo Way. The artwork is to be donated to the city at no cost, so it is recommended that the city council approve the placement of the artwork piece by Philip K. Smith in the downtown park and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents to facilitate installation of the artwork.
Thank you. Councilmember Corr.
Great, thank you. I've met with a committee who's been working on this, and I really just want to thank them for their work and leadership, and that they're actually going out to raise all the money. I'm sure people will be hearing about the fundraisers that they're doing, to raise the money to do this, instead of asking for city funds. But it's really beautiful from the drawings, and I'm very happy to move this item to accept the donation with thanks.
I'll second that, and I also want to say that I know they've been working on this for quite some time, and it's great to see it come to fruition.
Thank you. So there's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Corr.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Middleton.
Aye.
Mayor Holstich.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. The next item is item 5B, consideration of the fiscal year 2020-2021 general fund review and fiscal year 2021-2022 budget update. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes.
And this is probably one we don't want to rush through. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So can somebody, I'm not sure who has the slides.
Your slides are up.
But I don't have the changer. Okay, thank you. I'd like to see the whole thing. I'm sorry, I wasn't sure who helped me do this portion of it. Okay, so the general fund revenues, our amended rolling budget for 2021 was at 130 million and our estimated actuals as of September 27th, 2nd, I'm sorry, is 141, which is 12 million over our estimated rolling budget. The general fund expenditures on the rolling budget was 127 million and our estimated actual is 119 with a savings of 7.7, due to the higher than projected revenues in TOT, cannabis sales, and property taxes. And we also have received a 4-point million grant from the American Relief Act. This is one of the slides that we generally show and it'll tell you, if you look at the estimated actual over the revised budget, where we were up 35 in TOT, 27, I mean, we're at 27 in property taxes. So this kind of gives you the overall of the taxes of the increases over the estimated budget. This is our favorite slide, the fund balance. We'll go back to this after we review this portion of the estimated 2021. We are showing that our surplus is at 22 million, unrestricted fund balance at 48 million. We have the CalPERS set aside at 22.2 with a total fund balance of 70.5 million dollars. If you have any questions while I go through these, please feel free to stop and ask me questions. Our fiscal year 21-22, our revenues are exceeding our projections and staff is recommending that we increase the revenues by 7.4 as follows. TOT increased by 4 million, sales tax by 1.4, cannabis by 1.1, utility users tax by 900. With the additional revenues, staff is also requesting that we appropriate additional 6.3 million, 3.9 for personnel costs in various departments, and amend the 2021 allocated position and comp plan, 1.8 for overtime costs in various departments, 215 to reinstate the ACE parking and data ticket contracts for the downtown parking, 260 to reinstate downtown security contract, 13.8 for the Wellwood Library operations, and 50,000 for the incentivized police hiring bonuses. These items were, these were taken out of the budget when we reduced it due to COVID. We would also add 100 for outside personnel recruiting services and 40,000 for the continued cost of K-Rail rentals. Measure J Fund, the Measure J Fund revenues adopted budget was 16. The estimated ending is 17 million, which is an increase of 1.7. For 21-22, we are recommending an increase of 1.3 million, bringing it from 16.5 to 17.8. I don't know why this is going back the wrong way. Okay, at this point, do you have any questions for staff?
Thank you. Questions for city staff? I have one if I can.
Sure.
I'm trying to delay so we don't have to echo because it's really distracting. So I have questions about the American Relief Act funding. So I've seen various cities doing all kinds of programs with these dollars. So just hoping you might detail what our plan is to spend that 5.4 million dollar grant.
Was included for the uses in 2021 budget and 21-22, they broke it into two years. We were only unable to use it for the period of March 31st, the first portion of it, through July 31st. So the money offset in the budget was for personnel costs and bringing the employees back and for COVID relief when employees are out taking sick leave due to COVID. That also covers those costs. It also covers costs for police and fire.
What are the allowable uses for those funds?
There's a whole list of them. I don't have them readily available, but I can bring it back at the next meeting when I will be coming back in December and I could bring back the report that I had initially filed and we have to file another one in December. So I will bring back the uses for that. There's a whole laundry list of items that we can use.
Thank you. I would like an opportunity for the city council to consider how we would like to use those funds, so whether they should be revenue replacement or for payroll or for staff or for other programs. Again, different cities are doing different things and I think it's an opportunity to have a policy decision made by city council instead of automatically applying them to those uses because it is a good, it is a lot of fun for our community and obviously we've suffered in so many ways because of the pandemic. So you'll bring that back in December?
I will. If you look at the frozen and unfunded positions, a lot of those that went to those positions for, like if you, I'm not sure, it's page eight, I believe, of my staff report, it's $4 million to bring back 23, the balance of the 23 positions. That's what most cities are using for. If they did have layoffs, they're using it for the cost of employees.
Thanks. I just think it's a policy decision for city council to make. This is such a large chunk of funds. Other questions or comments? Mayor Pro Tim Middleton.
Okay, thank you. I'm not sure if this is for Nancy, Justin, or a large number of people, but I'm thrilled to see the 23 positions that have been frozen and unfunded be identified. 10 of them are in the police department, three are in the fire department. We are adding 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 people in development services. These are positions that are going to make it, the quality of the service we're able to provide the public so much better. Can I get a sense of how quickly we believe we will be able to fill these positions once authorized?
That's a little bit of a complicated question depending on the position. So for instance, in the police department, there are a handful of lateral candidates. There are some cadets already entering the academy. So, you know, some of that depends on applications coming in. I think realistically for positions that can just be filled where the recruitment process has to take place, that's probably a three-month to six-month window. And just bear in mind with some of the significant vacancies, especially those that take more robust recruitment efforts and assessment efforts, police chief, assistant city manager and some of those, they're wrapping up, but there are some others coming around the corner. Those tend to take a little more time from the HR department. And so they also just have to phase how many of those they have simultaneously. They tend to start a couple, a few weeks later, start a few more as they're kind of, and roll through them that way. So I think six months is probably a good outside timeframe to get most of those filled, given that there are candidates to fill them.
Thank you. That helps. Again, these are truly important positions and we have, we need more police officers on the street, we need more firefighters, and we definitely need to improve the timeliness of the processing of applications for new homes and new businesses. And lastly, a comment, when we started this last year, we made a commitment to, if revenues increased, to increase the funding of our reserves. We've kept that promise and I think it's one of the most important promises we have kept over the last year. We do not know when the next emergency will occur and we're creating the kind of reserve that will make us resilient when the next downturn comes. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions from council members? So city staff, if you could clarify for the public the action that the council is being considered or being asked to take tonight and how that fits in overall with our budget process?
Counsel, I'm happy to help with that. More or less, we took a fairly conservative approach going into this year's budget, noting that COVID was then and is still now a factor. And so we've committed to handle that somewhat like a rolling budget where as we monitor revenues coming in and expenses going out, when we realize that we have opportunities to adjust those numbers, we do. So that's what we've done. We've essentially realized some additional revenue coming in, used that revenue to fill those positions that were otherwise frozen. So this really just brings us up to complete staffing levels and we'll continue to monitor that going forward. So if some of those increased revenue trends continue, that we're able to look to some new programs and other exciting things over the course of this fiscal year and going into next.
Thank you, city manager. So when would those conversations occur?
I think roughly quarterly, but it also depends on some special programs. So for instance, we had a conversation last night about special equity programs and reparations. And so that would likely, that could be a budget amendment that occurs more quickly. But generally, if we didn't have those special programs, I think we'll come in roughly quarterly as we're accumulating the month's financial reports that really speak to our financial condition.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council members or motions?
Just a comment. In seeing that we are doing well, that we have additional funds, I really would like us to consider in the future the other things that we've discussed. I know a lot of this can come during our visioning session, but there's a lot of programming that we've discussed, a lot of funding of other things, our parks, et cetera. So I'd really love to have more of a robust conversation on all of those things that have been deferred over the years now that we've had some additional funds. So just want to put that out there for everyone.
Thank you. I completely agree and wondering if city manager, we could incorporate that and some of that into our visioning session to talk about funding priorities for additional revenue since we're going to receive a lot of asks and we're balancing so many needs and we don't know what the future holds. So can we have that as we set priorities? We'll also talk about uses for additional revenue.
Absolutely. Just bear in mind that some of the accumulated balances that happened over the course of last fiscal year were also the result of some of the significant corrections that council made in reducing staff and some of those things. Right now, what you see in the current fiscal year rolling budget is expenses roughly equal to revenues. So again, if revenues continue to come in strong, we'll have the ability to fund more ongoing programs. Otherwise, I think what you'd want to do is look to some of the capital improvements to spend the accumulated one-time reserves, but that rate of reserve won't continue because we have now restored our staffing levels to meet that level of revenue, if that makes sense. So we just have to be cognizant of one-time versus ongoing money, but our financial position is overall good and improving, so that should leave ample room to talk about new programs and especially those one-time capital projects and other such one-time investments.
Thank you. Councilmember Woods.
I would just echo what the city manager just said and what councilmember Garner just said, that I think that we've had deferred projects, that this would be a time to catch up and talk about them, be it during the visioning session or thereafter.
I agree. I think it's an important conversation about our reassessing our goals for reserves, knowing that the future is uncertain, but really knowing that we've also deferred so many needs and we know that that's costly as well. And so I would like to have an in-depth conversation even about, you know, how to hold our reserves, the best way to invest into our communities, how to do economic development, we keep talking about this, to investments that would pay off, right, in terms of staffing or in terms of economic development. We've also talked about needs for additional staffing, that city staff is understaffed in many departments and we have additional needs. We really are seeing, I think, an extreme exponential growth in our city and demand for tourism and visitors and our housing market. And we're at this point in our city budget as well. So I would like to have those broader conversations about our budget. Other comments? So is there a motion to move staff recommendation?
Don't move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? I just have a question. So does moving staff, approving staff's recommendation then include applying the 5.4 million from the American Relief Act to staffing costs for the way that it's laid out in the proposed budget here?
The first tranche of those funds were considered as part of this fiscal year budget. So really, they're all fungible. So if you wanted to assign those to other programs within the budget, you could. Or as we get some other funds coming in and you wanted to assign those, the 5.4, to new special programs, you can. But right now, they're essentially accounted for in the overall revenues and expenses projected in the budget and from that perspective are sort of spoken for. So yes, you can, but we would probably just want to see how those apply. And again, if they're one-time, we could probably exchange some of how we were booking those funds and take funds from fund balance and apply those differently if you wanted to assign it that way.
Thank you. It seems to not matter all that much because they're fungible and we're probably going to have that amount at the end of the year or mid-year, right? I just want to be thoughtful about ways that we might be able to spend those funds or leverage those funds with other programs and just be thoughtful that way. So I'd like to have that conversation in December if we can.
Yeah, that's no problem. We are anticipating a future allocation of the funds as well. So one way or the other, if we would like to allocate those in a special way, we can have that conversation.
Thank you. Sometimes it's hard for us to see, I know we went through this before, all the big cities get so much in funding and they're doing so many interesting programs with these funds. We get so little in comparison. But, okay, so there's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Pro Tim Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Corrus.
Yes.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Mayor Holstich.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. The next item is item 5C, discussion on the new scope of services for solid waste, recycling, and organic waste collection services to address the requirements of SB 1383 regulations. Can we have a staff report, please? And I will also ask that we not rush through this as we grapple with the impacts of SB 1383. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening, council members. I am here to talk to you about the scope of changes to the franchise agreement to meet the requirements of SB 1383, which is the new organics management law from the state of California. And just to be clear, we wanted to present you with the key elements that would be changing under the franchise to get your input so that we could incorporate any questions or changes you might have into a draft that we would present to you at a later meeting. As a reminder, for you and for the folks at home, the regulations were finalized last November and it's really designed to address food waste and food insecurity as well as methane emissions from landfills by preventing organic materials from getting to the landfill. These are highly prescriptive regulations and they will affect pretty much everybody. There are two key dates to keep in mind. The first is January 1st of 2022, which is the date by which jurisdictions have to have regulations in place and programs in place to implement these requirements. And then January then January 1st of 2024, when we are supposed to be enforcing these requirements. Now, there is a new law that passed the legislature and sitting on the governor's desk, SB 16619, which does provide some relief for local jurisdictions that fail to implement enforceable mechanisms by that January 1st deadline. If we provide a justification to the state and it is approved, then they will waive enforcement fines that could be leveled against this jurisdiction if we are not in full compliance by January 1st. So, we are awaiting the determination on that particular law and certainly hoping that that goes through to provide some relief for all jurisdictions who are pretty much in the same boat that we are. Just as a reminder, there are several components to SB 1383, including providing organics collection services to all residents and businesses, establishing edible food recovery program, conducting outreach and education, and modifying our procurement policies to incorporate provision or procurement of reclaimed organic material. And again, 2024 is when we have to start enforcing these regulations. So, what I wanted to run through were the requirements that change the scope. So, these are the things that we are responding to, and then I'll follow it quickly by the changes to scope that you will eventually see. So, the first is that the city must provide service to all residential customers. So, this is just focused on residential right now. So, all residential customers have to have service. So, right now, we're only required to have recyclers, recycling and trash. And so, this would change so that everybody has to have a three bin system of trash, recycling, and organic waste. Organic waste includes both green waste and food waste, and all containers have to be color-coded and labeled. The law is very prescriptive on what they should look like and what they should say. So, again, everybody must be provided with service under the law. So, in terms of the franchise, we will be providing a three cart service to all customers that receive cart service. They can choose from a variety of sizes, and we plan on charging a flat fee regardless of the container size or use. So, everybody basically gets the same service, which is a traditional way and a common way for these services to be provided. We will also be providing a two-and-a-half gallon container for multifamily customers that are space constrained. So, we have a lot of complexes out there that have not a lot of space for their waste management infrastructure, and so we'll be providing them with smaller containers if they need it. For these operations, manual collection would be required, so that would be, may be a little bit of a change to some of the things that, the ways that service is provided now. We will have, again, it'll be once-weekly collection. All streams will be collected on the same day, although people's collection day may change depending on the new routes. Larger multifamily complexes with shared bins will have an extra green cart or bin. We had a conference call with about 60 multifamily dwelling owners or operators last week, and it was mostly focused around how they were going to be able to accommodate these additional carts. The timing of the service is still in question, and we can talk a little bit more about timing when we, a little later in this presentation, but it will depend on the availability of infrastructure like trucks and carts. The existing green carts customers will likely start new service starting in January 1st of 2022. All existing carts will need to be properly labeled, and any new carts will need to be stamped, and so that is something that PSDs will be responsible for doing as part of the franchise. And then, in response to a question from councilmember Woods in previous meeting, people that originally paid for carts would be able to receive credit for that cart upon request. So, originally, or currently, people pay about $12 for a cart, and so they could be reimbursed for that because, again, that will be included in everybody's base service. For commercial businesses and large multifamily complexes, so five units or more, the main change that they will see are twofold. One is that there is a lowering of the threshold for compliance with organics requirements. It goes from a half a cubic yard right now down to 20 gallons. So, as you can see here, that's a pretty significant drop in the threshold, so many, we may get many more customers on the commercial side than we had before. The other thing is that multifamily complexes are now required to collect food waste. Originally, or in the current law, they are only required to collect green waste, and this is typically handled through their landscape or landscaper or gardener. So, again, they'll have to be able to accommodate this additional service on their property. For those that don't, there are opportunities for space waivers, which are temporary in nature. So, we'll be able to work with them to figure out how long it might take them to acquire that space or expand their trash enclosure and try to accommodate that through some sort of a space waiver. Proof of green waste service is still required. So, again, if a property self-hauls their material either through contract with their landscaper or haul it themselves, they must provide documentation of that, and same would go if they wanted to do something with their other organic waste, like food waste. So, this is, this is a, an important requirement and something that we're also going to have to work with landscapers on because they will need to be providing that information to the managers of those properties. So, for this one, again, there's new collection of food waste from multifamily properties. We have a lot more, potentially more, commercial customers to serve, and in response to this, PSDs Palm Springs Disposal Services has identified the addition of a couple of new recycling ambassadors, and they would be providing monitoring and outreach support primarily to the commercial customers, but also to residential customers as well. And again, those are the things that they would be doing there. And we have representatives from Palm Springs Disposal here with us today, just in case you have any questions, more specific questions about the service they would be providing. So, another thing that is included in the law is contamination monitoring. So, we plan to do a couple versions of this. So, we are required to do at least one of these things to maintain compliance with the law, but we feel that this is really critical for the effectiveness of implementation and understanding where we are on the compliance scale. So, what we plan to do is do residential route reviews, which are visual inspection of contents. So, for residential customers, we, Palm Springs Disposal will identify a certain number of homes to visit on each route day, and they will make their rounds and take a look at what's inside those containers and identify if there is contamination present and leave a note for the customer if that is the case. We will also be doing residential waste evaluations to determine overall diversion progress. So, what that means is that we will be collecting up material from a route, combining that material, and then measuring it to determine what's in that, what's in, what's in, what was collected along that route to identify kind of general understanding of what the contamination levels are. For commercial customers, we'll also do commercial route reviews, similar to the home, the residential inspections, where the ambassadors will go around and take a look at what's in the carts that are outside of the businesses. We will also do individual, additional individual inspections if needed for compliance purposes if we do find contamination, and there's no change in that after we've done outreach and education. So, so again, it's a pretty robust contamination monitoring plan, and that additional detail is included in your staff report. Again, conducting these monitoring will be the responsibility of Palm Springs Disposal Services. Again, the addition of recycling ambassadors will really help in conducting that work and to educate residents and commercial customers about what they need to be doing differently. And then, of course, waste evaluations will involve an additional step of transporting, separating, and weighing certain amounts of materials along those routes. So, those are the things that we can expect from that front. The next thing we are incorporating into the franchise agreement is references to community composting. We did a survey of residents. About 280-plus responded. About 15 of those responses indicated that they were interested in some form of community composting or residential composting. So, we know that there's interest out there. We've also been in communication with the Desert Compost Coalition and know that there is a movement afoot to really provide that service here in Palm Springs. So, what we've done in terms, in the context of the franchise agreement is really consistent with the guidance that CalRecycle has provided to us. So, we are, we looked at our current franchise agreement, assessed the limitations of scope, and have added some references in there to compost material. So, we have added the state definition of community composting, which essentially provides a threshold limit above which that composting operation would need to get a permit, but otherwise, that is the definition that shows up in the CalRecycle guidance and model franchise. In our franchise agreement, we basically treat compostable material just like recyclable material. It is excluded from the scope of the agreement if it's donated or hauled by the generator. So, this provides people the opportunity to take their material to a community compost facility or other processor. It provides them the opportunity to compost at home. The only limitation that we have related to this is a, the franchise, exclusive franchise hauling fee. So, whoever operates this operation just can't charge a hauling fee. And so, and in conversations with representatives from the compost coalition, they had indicated that that wasn't necessarily a problem for them. So, we think that this addition to our scope, limitations of scope, will really facilitate the adoption of community, a community composting program. Currently, there is no reduction in fees for those that choose to compost materials, and no exemption is allowed for the residential requirements to provide the service. So, again, we are required to provide service to all households, and so, again, we plan to do that with a three-cart system. The, it is my understanding that, well, two things. One is that it's just a reminder that the requirement to collect organics is both green waste and food waste, and composting programs are typically focused on food waste. So, even if a household brought their comp, their food waste to a composting site, they would still be required to manage their green waste through the system. So, so that cart is necessary for those customers. I think that's it for that. I also wanted to just point out a few additional changes that are also mentioned in the staff report. There's also enhanced communication and outreach that's required under the, the law, and so we'll be working with PSDs to do that. We also noted that the Community Compost Coalition, they are also, will likely play a key role in that outreach effort with a focus on the food waste. The record-keeping requirements are extensive, so PSDs will be modifying some of their systems and providing their field staff with devices so that they can monitor progress in the field and report that centrally so that we can report that to the state annually. And then, finally, edible food recovery. Edible food recovery isn't really a responsible of our franchisee, but they have agreed to just help us identify facilities. But again, it is really not part of their scope and the scope of the franchise. So, I wanted to talk about timing just a little bit because a lot has been made about the deadline for this, which is January 1st of 2022. So, if we are to carry forward with the idea that the current requirements hold, due on January 1st would be an ordinance, the updated franchise, the contamination monitoring, the services that would be provided to all customers, and then all rate increases would need to be approved, and other items like the purchasing policy would need to be in place. So, all of those things would technically need to be in place on January 1st. Again, failure to comply results in fines, potentially to the jurisdictions. So, to do this, we've been largely operating under this assumption, and we've laid out some timelines that are incredibly challenging and probably unlikely anyway, but if we were to do all of this, this is what that might look like. So, we would be here today talking to you about scope. On October 14th, we would present you with rate information and rate adjustments. There are three rate adjustments that are listed there, an extraordinary rate adjustment and an annual rate adjustment, as well as the SB 1383 adjustments. We believe that we'll be ready to take, bring those, the first two to you, the ERA and the annual, but we would likely, be unlikely to bring the SB 1383 numbers to you on the 14th. October 18th would be the date that we would issue the Prop 218 notice. This would have to go through public hearing process under Prop 218. On October 28th, we would present the franchise language for approval and present the ordinance. We would do the second reading of the ordinance in mid-November. We would have the Prop 218 hearing in early December, and then December 18th, the ordinance would go into effect. And then, January services, services, January 1st services would likely begin, but again, we do have a delay in terms of the infrastructure that would be available at that time. So, we would start with the customers who have service, who have green cart service already, and with commercial customers would likely be the focus. So, we're, again, we're hoping that Prop 69, or AB 619 is signed, because even under this aggressive scenario, there is, we are unlikely to meet all of those deadlines. As I mentioned before, other communities are in the same boat, so we are pretty much in a very similar situation as the rest of our colleagues in the valley. So, under option two, the deferred enforcement, if council would like to go forward with this sort of a timeframe and assuming that AB 618, 619, SB 619 is in a place, we would go forward on January 1st, most likely with the ordinance in place, some commercial monitoring in place, outreach, of course, started, new service for customers that have existing green carts, and other items may also be in place, like our purchasing policy and edible food recovery programs. But we would likely delay the discussions around the franchise agreement, rate increases for SB 1383, and most likely, the new infrastructure would lag so that on July 1st, we would have all of those other things in place and ready to go. So, again, to do, get this waiver from the requirement to have everything ready January 1st, we would need to file some sort of an intent to comply with the state. They would have to approve that, and then if we did not meet those deadlines, we would be subject to, potentially to fines if they so chose. So, to do this, we have a little bit different timeframe in which we have mainly a little bit more time to work on the franchise and get the rates reviewed and really out there for public review. So, so for this one, again, on October 14th, we'd just be presenting to you the ERA and the annual rate increases and doing a Prop 218 notice for those. November 4th, we would likely present the ordinance. We could maybe stick to the October 28th deadline for that one, too. Then, November 8th, 18th would be a second reading of the ordinance. November, December timeframe would be, we would issue the intent to comply with the state. And then, December 9th, again, is the Prop 218 hearing. We would probably present the franchise agreement at that time, and then, again, try to get that ordinance implemented or passed by December 18th. And then, in, early next year, so February or so, we would finalize the franchise agreement. March, we would probably issue the rates and the Prop 218 notice for SB 1383 rates, and then April, May, to hold that hearing so that those rates could be in effect on July 1st. So, that was a lot. I'm sorry it's late, but again, I'm happy to answer any questions for you. We also have our attorney, who's ready to respond if we need her to do that, as well as the folks from PSDs here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, Patrick. Really appreciate your work on this. It's very complicated. I'm sitting here and sort of my head is spinning and I'm wondering how any person in the community is supposed to, it's not you, just is supposed to understand this framework that the state and that the city have set out to create, primarily the state. So, okay. With that, I just want to explain to the community, so the staff recommendation here, the action in front of city council is to provide feedback to staff regarding the changes in scope to the franchise agreement with Palm Springs Disposal Service. So Patrick, I know you went over the timeline. There is no language at all, or even the current franchise agreement language in this to look at. So can you explain that a little bit? I know you went over the timeline and some of the conversations there and the opportunity for council and the community to give input on the language. But can you just speak to that a little bit, please?
Sure. So we are currently working on the language in the franchise agreement to reflect the scope. It has been very challenging to nail down the scope, given all of the intricacies of the law and the requirements that are placed on the hauler and the city to, to conform to these requirements. So we've really just finalized a lot of these scope discussions. And so again, we wanted to kind of present these ideas to you and see if you had questions about them that we could then reflect in the draft document that we would bring back to council for a full review.
Thank you. And then, I know you just had it on your slide. Explain the timeframe that we will have to get community input about the franchise agreement language.
Sure. So there are, do we want to go back to the, can we go back to the presentation? So if we were to try to proceed with the January 1st deadline, to try to get as much done as possible by that January 1st deadline, this is kind of what that franchise, or that, that process would look like. And so we would try to bring a draft franchise, some draft franchise language to council at the end of October or early November. And then we would have some time to talk through that and make some changes to that franchise language over the next couple of months. So, so again, as long as we had it finalized by the end of that December 9th meeting. So we would probably present it in the end of October and then get feedback from people and then probably present a final version on December 9th. So that, that was what I would imagine if we were going forward on this timeline that we would have to do. If we assume that SB 619 is passed, and we should know that actually in the next week. So it's on the governor's desk and it has to be signed by the 10th, I believe. So we will know that fairly soon. If we, if we have that and we want to take advantage of that reprieve, we could elongate that time that we have to negotiate the franchise and to, to look at it in detail so that everybody understood it and could move forward comfortably with it. And again, we would probably start by issuing a draft this year and then probably work to finalize that very early next year. Because again, the, the cost information really depends on that franchise agreement. So, so if, if there are changes in scope or there are changes in the services, those are the kinds of things that we would need to call out so that we could have an accurate franchise and rates associated.
Thank you. The current franchise agreement is a public document, right?
It is, yes.
As a lawyer, I have a really hard time giving direction about an agreement without the agreement in front of me. And I know that that, I see the two other lawyers shaking their head yes in agreement. It's just really hard to give direction and, and I appreciate that this is such a complex issue and I really appreciate your, your work on this. But, but I need to see the franchise agreement. And then, so you said that you added the state definition and I wasn't sure what you meant by that, the state definition of community composting. So I know the composting coalition had a request to adopt CalRecycle's model language for community composting. So what state definition language did you add?
Sure. So that definition is the definition that appears in the CalRecycle model franchise agreement and it's the definition that they use generally to describe community composting.
Thank you. So council, I'm probably not the only one feeling this way. What would you like to do with this tonight? I mean, I can give general comments. I really appreciate the Community Compost Coalition and advocates for doing work on this and for calling in. It's great to see people involved. Actually, when I first moved to Palm Springs, I was asking about composting because I had moved from the Bay Area where I went to law school and I was just so surprised that community composting wasn't an option in Palm Springs. And I know that we want to be leaders on sustainability and climate and greenhouse gas emissions and all these things. But I think this is such a great opportunity for us to lead the way and put our money where our mouth is in terms of our values. I know it's complicated with the existing franchise agreement. But I very much would like to see the franchise agreement so that council can enter those conversations about what it might look like. Because I think that SB 18, 1383 is an opportunity to, you know, one, educate the community about our waste system and where our waste goes and what the climate impacts are. And then two, to rethink how we're doing things like in our franchise agreement and to allow for community composting. So I'd love to work with the Community Compost Coalition to work on some of their requests. I know they're requesting a resolution in support of community composting that they might pass in Palm Springs and then bring to other cities to expand that movement. I know they're asking for a site and then they're asking for some language in the franchise agreement that would allow for community composting in Palm Springs. So I very much would like to see that happen, but again, it's hard for me to have that conversation in detail without being able to read through the franchise agreement myself. So other questions or comments from council members? Councilmember Garner.
Yes, I'm also, I feel the same way. I'd like to be able to see the franchise agreement. But I'd also like to see the proposal from Community Composting as well. I know I've had conversations with them, with Patrick as too, about site locations. We went to a site, a possible site location. But I, I think it would be helpful if the council could also kind of see a proposal of how that would, that would be laid out, something a little bit more, more formal. At least for me, I've had a lot of conversations, but I haven't seen anything that says this is how it all works. And not, and I've seen how, I've seen information about how it works for other locations, but I want to know how it would work for us. And what I have not asked yet, and this could be the case, is I don't know if they need a site location first in order to be able to say that. But I just want to be able to make sure that we're all like, council is all in the loop about how this would work out for us and how it would work out with that franchise
Thank you. Councilmember Wood. And then councilman, sorry, councilmember Coors, did you have your hand up first? Okay, thank you. You had a finger, it kind of looks like a hand. Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree, I want to look at more of the specifics going on, in particular the logistics of everything. How billing might work, how collections might work, if people don't pay, how does that work? How do we as a staff monitor it? What kind of staff time is it going to take? You know, when you get to community composting, it's a whole new bailiwick. You know, we know with the franchisee, how they work. I, I have very little, if any, information or any history on the people who want to do community composting and I would need that information to even consider it.
Thank you. Other comment? Councilmember Coors?
Yeah, thank you and thank you, Patrick. No, I agree. I think to give sort of feedback on changes in the franchise agreement, I think we just need a lot more specifics has been said. Unless, Patrick, there's something like you can give us a specific that you need from us tonight? Because I think that's where we're all, sound like we're struggling the same. And I appreciate, you know, you, and to some degree you had more in your presentation that was in the staff report as far as dates and stuff. So it just made it a little hard for me to follow, but I know this is changing rapidly. So, you know, once we see if the governor signs the bill, is that maybe a better time? But is there something specific that you need us to give you some direction on tonight so we can move forward with whatever the next pieces are?
So this was partly about conveying important items that you need to understand. So, you know, like the basic, everybody that will receive the three cart service, I think that's a key thing. I think we've received quite a bit of feedback from, for example, when we did the outreach to the multifamily units, there were lots of questions about why do I need to do this? I can't believe I have to do this. And so just helping you guys understand what the requirements are, I think is a key step in that process. Same thing goes for residents. We have a lot of desertscape here and we have a lot of folks that are part-time residents. So I believe that adding another cart, for some people, you know, they, they may not want that. And so again, understanding that we are required to provide the service to every resident is a really key thing. So, so again, I think just kind of priming you for some of those things that you might be starting to hear, I think that is an important piece. And we will certainly bring back the franchise and the details to you once we have them. I agree that probably waiting for 619 to be signed is a key element because that will really help us in terms of presenting a real timeframe and say, and we can say, okay, here's what relief we have and that's what, this is what it means. We are continuing to move forward at, you know, as fast as we can with these things. And so again, I think pretty much the, the ordinance is the key thing that we would want to finish this year. And so we'll definitely be bringing that back to council. So, so anyway, so I think it's mostly just for your awareness about the things that are required and the things that you will be seeing in the next, next round.
That's helpful, thank you.
So we're having a conversation about our climate action plan and our emissions and we're doing that soon, right? I know councilman Coors has a proposal on that and working with David Friedman. So how does that, this fit in, especially as we talk about community composting and how it can reduce emissions? How does that fit into our climate action plan and our outcomes that we're working on?
Sure. So one of the, it's not our biggest, it's not our biggest emissions factors, but one of the key emissions that we have is the release of greenhouse gases from landfill based on the amount of material we dispose in the landfill. So that number, we hope, will go down as a result of this new service. So the fact that people will hopefully be separating out food waste and green waste in ways that they were not before is the intent of this law. And so it is our hope that we reduce the amount of material that is going to a landfill, whether it's going to a composting facility or community composting, it doesn't really matter as long as it's not going to the landfill. So that's really the key element here. And because the ordinance in the law requires contamination monitoring, there is an added level of, of kind of checks and balances in terms of making sure that people are doing this and doing this correctly. So, so again, I think it adds a more robust framework for our implementation of our recycling programs. And it is intended to reduce that amount of material that's going to landfill. That, that is how it will affect our numbers.
Thank you. I think I also meant in terms of process. So if we're having a conversation about overall outcomes and how to get to reduce emissions for our climate action plan, right? Like we're having this conversation separately and apart from that.
It, it is one of the items that we have mentioned in the climate action roadmap that we would like to implement as part of that program. So, so I mean, we have to implement it, but it will have an impact on our greenhouse gas emissions.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Porter Middleton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Obviously, we have to move forward with what the law requires. We want to do everything we can to increase the level of composting. But I do think it's important that we have a clean franchise agreement that everyone can understand. And we need to remember that the overwhelming majority of our residents and our businesses are going to be working through our franchisee. And that's where we're going to get the biggest spend for the, for our bucks. So there are going to be some early adopters and what we can do in terms of pilot programs and other kinds of things to really use those early adopters to leverage adoption by other individuals is a great thing to do. But let's make sure that we, that we don't confuse the public any more than, than the law is going to.
Yes, or ourselves.
Yes.
Thank you. I agree with your comment, it's well said. So from here, so we will bring this back to city council, what I've heard, just summarizing some direction and please then correct it and add to it. So we will bring this back to council with the proposed and existing franchise agreement language. We will include additional information on community composting programs and also the Desert Community Composting, I'm sorry, the name of the organization that is advocating for, for this work in Palm Springs. Is there anything else that council would like to give in terms of direction? Councilmember Wood. You're muted, councilmember.
You know, in the analysis of the community composting, you know, what I'd like to also see is it, does it mean double trips? Do we have Palm Springs Disposal Service servicing every home one day a week and they're servicing the home another week and then we double the trips, which doubles our emissions, things of that nature? So, you know, really looking at it very pragmatically. Thank you.
Thank you. Also be interested in the conversation around a site. So councilmember, I think Garner said this, is, is the site the first step? It sounds like it probably is. And then what are possible locations for that site on city land or other land and what might be the, the steps in the process to identify that?
Sure. We can, we can provide maybe a little bit more information. I can work with economic development or planning to do that in terms of what would be entailed in finding a city site. And I'm not sure what a private site would look like, but, so we can kind of scope that out. And I just wanted to be clear, too, that, that a lot of the things that we're talking about in terms of community composting is independent of the franchise. So the franchise does not govern processing of materials, it just covers the collection of those materials, so.
Thank you. So I think that would be helpful to spell out in plain language. So what are the needed changes, if any, to the franchise agreement? It sounded like one of the issues might be that exact language exempting community compost and it sounds like one might be the hauling fee issue that you raised. So how that could limit it? And then, yeah, we'll go from there. Other direction or comments from council? I will say, I know Patrick is sometimes a one-man show in terms of sustainability for our city and thank you, Patrick, for working on this and so much. for our city. And thank you, Patrick, for working on this and so much more. I know that we have volunteers like David Friedman who work nearly full-time for the city on sustainability. And it's my position that sustainability is probably the top issue we face as a world and as a community. And we're on the front line because we live in a desert and we're facing hotter and hotter temperatures that are really uninhabitable. So that's all to say that we're facing extreme climate crisis and I don't think Patrick alone can solve it. And so I'd very much like to see the city fund more people in our sustainability department. And also to Patrick, if we need to hire consultants to do this work for you or for David Friedman, I very much think that it's worth the investment because we don't have a lot of time to waste. And you are very talented and smart and, you know, we want you to be spending it on, on the most important issues, but we also want a team behind you. So maybe, and that's a conversation city council can have when we have our visioning session and our budget discussion about how to put our money where our mouth is in terms of our priorities, right? So I saw councilmember Garner did a thumbs up on there on her screen and I see heads. So, so Patrick, if you are overwhelmed with work or if your team is, please, I think, bring that back to council, too, in terms of how to support your work. And that goes to the city manager, really, about staffing and funding for consultants or other support.
Thank you. And so we are working with HR and with city manager to define a new position in sustainability. So we're working on it. So.
Thank you. But we need like five people.
Yeah. Good point.
But that's good progress. I appreciate that. Anything else on this item? Seeing none, you don't need to vote because it's just general direction, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. So we already did item 5D and we already did public comment. So the next item is city council and city manager requests and upcoming agenda development. So first off, start with the city manager.
Mayor and council, I believe we've distributed to you a document, the tentative upcoming meeting schedule. You'll see that our October 14th and 28th meetings, while there's a little imbalance between the, the number of agenda items and time committed to those two meetings, so we'll probably need to adjust some things. And I think we can do that as we get closer to preparing for the October 14th meeting. But otherwise, really, October is spoken for in terms of agenda items. And I know that even as of tonight, I think we've added a couple of things that just need to come back that, that should be pretty quick. So no big deal there. And then November, you know, it always looks more than a month out as though the, the schedule is freed up. But what we've experienced is that's not the case. Between items that come back, between new things that become agendized, we just tend to not get very far to that back page or second page of the list where we have future items and unprogrammed future items. So those still really continue to accumulate as we generally identify new things to either return to the agenda in, in more detailed fashion, follow-up, additional research, you know, things like the SRO contract, which we'll need to add now, or, or any of the other number of things. So we're not making a lot of progress getting to those new things, but we are, of course, doing a lot of good work. So if you have any input for us on how to adjust this or priorities, we're all ears. Otherwise, this is our upcoming work for the next month or so.
Is there a way we could share that, the screen with the public or each other? So we can have a concrete conversation or we could do that at the next meeting somehow?
We can do that if you give us just a minute to put it up on a projector. I think we can do that. One second.
Thank you. I think it's just hard for the, it's probably not it. I think it's probably hard for the public to say this is what's on the list, but not be able to see the list. So thank you. I also don't have the list in front of me.
Yeah. And we're happy to make this part of the, the pack of materials. One of the reasons why we don't always do that is because this really is tentative and we don't want to create too many impressions. This almost always, even from one meeting to the next, items move. And so as long as people understand not to put, put these things in your calendar in pen, but perhaps pencil, because they do tend to shift. I apologize, the clarity there is not the best. But, but again, we, we have an October 14th meeting with what we say is about four hours of business. That's, that's really the other thing to keep in mind there is we have consent and presentations and other aspects to our meeting. So we generally try to build this to about five hours of regular business and no more. And in the next two meetings, we have four hours allocated for the 14th, but seven and a half for the 28th, which, which, again, we'll have to balance a little bit between those two things. I'm not, I haven't reviewed this in great detail for things that may move, but some of them are, are time sensitive, you know, things like appeals of, of planning zoning hearings and that kind of thing.
Thank you. So, thank you very much. Sorry. Did you want council direction on that or comment?
At this point, again, I think we'll balance out a couple of things for the 14th. Certainly, we want to make sure that we get to as many things as possible. I think our earliest evenings since I've arrived is probably about 10:30 and, and the later ones about midnight. So we might try to add a little something just to make sure we make the most of the 14th. If you see anything in particular, either now or later, that you think it needs to move up or down, we can certainly address it. Otherwise, we'll continue to, to balance this and make sure we have a nice, complete agenda.
Thank you. Councilmember Garner?
Thank you. One thing that's coming up is redistricting. So in November, that's when we're starting our redistricting. And I think, I don't think, well, there's a lot of public probably watching right now, but we just went through this process and now we have to go through it again by law. And I just want to make sure that, that when we do have those redistricting meetings, which we have scheduled out, that we're giving ourselves the time that's going to be needed. It's very possible that people won't come out in as much, but because California is also going through a redistricting process for the entire state, we could have quite a bit of public comment. And I just want us to be conscious of that and not packing our agenda so tightly that we're rushing that process, especially because the Fair Maps Act requires us to do very specific things. Sorry, I, this is, this is what I do for work now, is redistricting. Didn't expect that when I came back to California. But, so that's, that's just my pitch for, for a robust redistricting process that's not rushed.
Thank you. You are so lucky to have an expert on city council. Other council comments? Councilmember Witz?
You're muted.
You're muted.
Thank you. Thank you. I just was going to mention that October 28th seems very packed for me and that we have a general plan update, which can be, and the solid waste ordinance update, which could be a huge time suck. So I'm just really wondering if anything can be moved off of the 28th to give us time on those meaty issues.
Yeah, that was the imbalance that I was referring to. So I think the first thing we might look to do is to see if anything on the 28th agenda can be moved forward to October 14th. If that's not the case, we would be looking to reduce that down. And we'll have another bite at that apple when we meet on the 14th so that I can solicit input from council on the kinds of things you would most likely want to push. So you don't have to decide that now, but if you see something on that list that you think is not timely, is not as high a priority, or that you want to inquire if we can do that earlier on the 14th, bear in mind, you know, those materials, you know, go out next week. But we're, we're open to feedback.
We, I think, have had, when it's just four hours, just four hours. I think we've gone through, once or twice, we've gone through that pretty quickly. So I know that the materials for October 14th are due very, very soon. But I might look to see if you might add one short thing to that.
Yeah. So that, that is the first thing that we will do, is see if there is something on the 28th agenda that's, that's tentative that can be moved forward to October 14th. Generally, we have staff meetings the Monday following council, and that's where we kind of address that with the team. I'm a little shorthanded to weigh in on which of those might be able to be prepared by the end of next week, opposed to, you know, three weeks from now, as staff may have been planning. But we will look to add something to the 14th agenda. It's to make sure we make the most of our opportunity to meet.
Thank you. What's the Public Arts Ordinance, Mural Ordinance? Can you tell the public and us that, please?
Yes. So that ordinance, I think, started off as a proposed revision strictly to murals. I think the Arts Commission was interested in gaining some flexibility in the way that program is administered. But as I arrived and we kind of refreshed the entire Arts Commission ordinance and what it says for, you know, approvals of council and that kind of thing, I think it's also potential that they will just look to rework some of the Public Arts Ordinance, and that's kind of the enabling ordinance for the Arts Commission, again, to consider a different balance in the approval process. So I have not seen that draft yet, but I believe it's considered at the next Arts Commission meeting and then would be advanced to you. That's another item that's not necessarily timely. So that might be toward the top of the list to bump if we are still looking for something to bump by the time we get to that meeting.
Yes. It seems like Public Arts Ordinance and maybe the Outdoor Merchandise Ordinance might not be extremely necessary to do on October 28th.
Great. That, that's good feedback. We'll make those notes so that as we're balancing between the 14th and 28th, if we still have an unusually large agenda. And, and bear in mind that this far out, some things get moved on their own because they're not ready at the staff level or, or whatever. So we'll flag those, though, as things that council's inclined to move if we don't have other ways of reducing that agenda.
Right. Or holding we could move something up if it's ready to go. Okay. Other council comments on this tentative upcoming meeting schedule? Okay. Other general council comments for upcoming agenda development?
I'm just curious why we have to have a discussion of the tour to Palm Springs route? Why does council have to have a discussion on that?
I, I believe it's because the organizer of the tour would like to keep the route as it is. But as this was considered through SEPT and with some merchant input, there was a request to change the route. So I believe this is an attempt to kind of reconcile the differences in opinion there.
Thank you.
I just saw that in the newspaper a few months ago and that's all I know about it, other than it being on this list. It hasn't gone to like a subcommittee or anything like that, right? Just the commission?
I, I believe it has been heard by a couple of merchant-related organizations. I believe Main Street, perhaps some others. I know the organizers had come and presented and there, I participated in at least one meeting where there was an exchange of ideas based on the route and, and trying to kind of figure out what would be ideal. But I don't know to what extent it's been considered by a standing committee of the council or other organizations.
So does city staff recommend changing the route? Or we've just gotten that request from Main Street?
I, I believe the impetus, and I don't want to speak for some of the staff that more, are more directly involved with that effort, but my understanding is the first suggestions to change the route came from staff. But I know through the special events process that we're receiving input from stakeholders all the time and, and always working to try to reconcile what makes events work. And that includes impacts to merchants and other stakeholders. So I can't say for sure at this point what the rationale is, but that's the purpose of putting it on the agenda is to explain that to council and ultimately present you with a final decision.
Helpful. As I recall, Main Street brought it up. There's, I think, Main Street and possibly PS Resorts did polling of the merchants as far as whether they wanted on Palm Canyon or not. And then there were discussions about where else it could go. But I have no idea what the results, if any, are of that. And I haven't heard more conversation. And I wasn't on, Lisa, have you heard anything more on Main Street to share since those early conversations?
And just, I don't, I don't mean to interrupt.
You can't really deliberate.
But we should be careful about deliberating on this item. Yeah. The, the intent is to bring it back with exactly those details.
Right.
Thank you. And I think my point is, this helps us understand, let's have a clear process about how some things get to council. Because I know we've seen things on these lists that, that we aren't aware of. And we don't need to be aware of every single thing. It's good to have them come from commissions and from staff and from stakeholders. But once they get agendized for an important meeting, right, then it becomes a question.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and since this isn't agendized per se, but a tentative agenda, it is good to have these conversations so council knows the nature of the item and can give staff direction about taking a different approach should you choose.
Yep. I find that really helpful. Thank you. Mayor Protem, did you have other comments? Anything else from council before we adjourn? Okay. So we will move forward and go ahead and adjourn. The next regular city council meeting will be held on October 14th, 2021 at 5:30 PM. Thank you all. Thank you so much.
Mayor, are we adjourning back to closed session? Or not?
Yes. We will go, we will adjourn. So do we just need to go into recess to closed session? City clerk?
I'm sorry. I didn't hear that question.
Do we adjourn the meeting or are we going to recess for closed session?
We're recessing to closed session.
Thank you. So we will recess to closed session. Thank you. And for council, we're staying on the Zoom link. So just stay on the call, please. Thank you. Thank you. Have a great night.
It is 11:21. The city council met in closed session, reconvened, and is adjourning. There was no reportable action from the second portion of the closed session. Thank you. Good night.